Okay. We have everybody. I will call to order this meeting of the school committee, a regularly scheduled meeting at 6:05 on February 8th, 2022. First of all, I will read the agenda. And by the way, welcome to everybody here and welcome to everybody in our community. Thank you for joining, joining us tonight. For the agenda, we will have communications from the school committee and the administration, followed by a student representatives' report and public comment. We will have reports and discussion items around six, around 6:40 PM, including the curriculum subcommittee update and the Lynch School project update. We will then have action items, including the consideration of approval of the 2022 update of the bullying prevention and response plan. We will have a consideration of approval of the recommended 2022, 23 school year calendar, consideration of approval of the WHS Winchester High School Tech Crew, WHS Student Innovation Grant, followed by the Chair Report, followed by the interim superintendent report, future agenda items, next meetings, and adjournment. And hold on just a second. Okay. Okay. So now we will move into, oh, sorry, something is refusing to close on my screen, so I can't see my screen. Okay. So we'll now move into our communications and it's hard to believe we are already into February. I feel like we're well into February. So for community, for committee members, I'll just say that we have EFPPBC meetings that have been taking place weekly on Mondays at 6:00 PM. They are quite interesting to watch as the Lynch Project has been a prominent feature of their discussion recently. These are all virtual meetings, so please join if you have the time. And also, let's see, we have kindergarten applications that, and registration are now in progress, so please see your newsletters or communications from the district regarding this, and registration materials are due on March 7th. Kindergarten orientation across the district will be April 29th this year, so please mark your calendars. And finally, in anticipation of Desi's announcement on masking around the end of this month, the policy subcommittee will be discussing a sample policy based on Massachusetts Association of School Committees' reference policy this Friday, February 11th, and then also on February 15th. So just to be clear, the intent is simply to draft a policy that would support updated guidance from the commissioner on March 1st this year. We are not establishing or making recommendations to the school committee related to whether students should or should not be wearing masks in school. And Dr. Hackett, I believe you might have some updates on some vaccine clinics?
Thank you. I'm Chair. So, good evening, everyone. Good to see you. We have a couple of just communications. One, you do have budget documents in front of you in the red folder that the budget summary narrative was sent to Town Hall today, so that will be part of the, the town, the acting town manager's budget that will go to through the process that we have in front of us over the next few months, couple of months. I also wanted to let you know that we do have two vaccine clinics that will be taking place. They will be at Lynch and at Morocco, they will be in school during the day. Parents, it went out through Parent Square to those families yesterday, and they do have to actively register, and the details are right in the Parent Square announcement. Lynch will have their in-person clinic during the day on February 10th, and this is for the first or second dose of Pfizer. And then again, on March 3rd, we will be back for the same, that will be the second dose for those students who received it on the second of, I mean, I'm sorry, February 10th. Morocco, same, same protocol. It will be for Morocco, they'll be February 11th, which is Friday, so this Thursday and Friday, and then March 4th for the second dose, again, for those students who received their first dose with us in February. So I think that's good news, it's important news, and hopefully we can continue to support families and who would like to get vaccinated, may not have access, or for whatever reason haven't been able to get it done. It'll be interesting to see what the signups look like, so we should know more actually tomorrow. And I can let you know just offline how, what the numbers kind of look like, so that would be it for me. Thank you.
What were the hours of the clinic again?
We're gonna wait to see the signups and then we'll schedule in and around because we'll be shuffling kids out of classrooms.
Right, I see, I see. Thank you. Any other announcements from committee members? Mr. Nixon?
So just want to add, thank you for the plug for EFPPBC meetings. In addition to the government calendar, if you go to the homepage of the project website, which is lynch2025.com, we always post the, the time and date of the upcoming meeting and we have a link for the webinar there as well, just it's an alternative shortcut. Also, community members are welcome to use a email account if they have a question they want to submit in writing, and that's lynch2025faq@gmail.com. And I'm actually pleased to share, we got our first real question through that website after the meeting with the select board instead of the usual spam stuff, so it's a really good question. Tom joins me on the communications group with Deb DePeter and Lisa Matrandola, so there can be questions about, it could be about educational program, that would naturally go to the superintendent, questions about cost phasing, what have you. So if people have questions, it's really helpful to know it, that helps us understand if we're doing a good job about communicating, so I really appreciate that. We will not be meeting, however, on Valentine's Day, so we have scheduled that meeting for Wednesday, February 16th. All other meetings are indeed typically on a Monday.
Still 6:00 PM?
Still 6:00 PM, yes.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements from committee members? Okay. So next, we have the student representatives' report. Our student representatives had some conflicts on the schedule, on their schedules this evening, so they will not be joining us tonight. We will see them at a future meeting. And now we will move into public comment. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. It's not a discussion, a debate, or dialogue between individuals and the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. Any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. So we offer in-person public comment, and we would ask that if you would like to sign it, please sign in on the clipboard outside the room with the requested information. And we also offer remote public comment with registration 24 hours in advance. And we would just advise you, please turn on your cameras and give your names and your addresses consistent with our in-person process. So we will begin with in-person public comment. Anybody here? Okay, for in-person public comment. We do not have anybody, and then we will proceed to remote public comment.
Okay, we do have one person, Mr. Curlin is on the line. If you can hang with me here for a second, Mr. Curlin, I can hopefully get you, let me say that one more time, we have Mr. Curlin who is on the line, and I will allow him to talk and should be...
Should be able to get his camera on as well?
Actually, I have to promote him to panelist, that's the mistake I made last time. Curlin, I'm gonna promote you to panelist, you should be... I have promoted, but he is not, for some reason, making the move over here.
Does he have to accept it?
Yeah. Mr. Curlin, you might need to accept it, I'm gonna try it again. You might get a message that says you're being promoted to panelist and you just need to accept it.
It's usually a bar at the top of your screen?
That happened to me the other day.
I think I actually get a message that said the meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, it should pop up.
I'm listening, just gotta step up.
We are not able to make the connection here, I tried again. Mr. Curlin, if you see a message to be promoted to panelist, if you could accept it?
Send him a message in the chat, or is that not?
Chat's not active.
Not active, because he's not, yeah.
I wonder if it's a, the version of Zoom that he's using or we're using?
I just, yeah, I just downloaded the latest version.
No, for his version.
He might have a different version.
Okay, we can't seem to get him over.
Okay. Should we, can he unmute himself, I guess, as our last...
Yeah, let me, Mr. Curlin, I'm gonna try one more thing, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have you, see if I can unmute you. You're unmuted on our end, you still are muted on your end.
If that doesn't work, you can always invite him to submit a written statement.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Given the circumstances.
So, Mr. Curlin? If you would like to, since we have some technological difficulties here for our remote public comment, if you would like to submit your comments by email, then we would welcome that and we will add them to the record for the, for the public meeting. So please just email, you can email me at schoolcommittee...
Or the superintendent.
Or the superintendent.
Yeah.
Dr. Hackett at schoolcommittee, or, yeah.
At Winchester Public Schools.
Yes, Winchester Public Schools. Okay. Anybody else? Don't for public comment?
We do not.
All right. Okay. Our apologies from that end, and we will move, seeing as we have nobody else for our remote public comment, that we will move, we will close public comment and move into reports and discussion items. So our first item of business this evening is a curriculum subcommittee update, and this curriculum subcommittee had met recently to discuss the Program of Studies updates at the secondary level, and then also to receive an update from the Massachusetts Consortium of Innovative Educational Assessment, MCIEA, from their staff on their work, and also to get a sneak preview of their new dashboard for the data that they collect on school quality measures. So Mish Bergstrom will be updating on that, updating us on that, please.
So I wanted to be able to share with you this evening the new school quality measures website that MCIA, MCIEA has up, and if Dr. Hackett, if you could pull that up for us.
Just get out of this real quickly.
So while Dr. Hackett's pulling that up, the school quality measures are a holistic way to look at school quality that doesn't reflect test scores alone. They developed these frameworks with their partner districts through many focus groups and over the last several years. They are collecting data from students and educators at this point in, within the framework questionnaires, and for Winchester, our participation rate has been extremely high on these surveys at the high school, in the mid 80% to 90% participation rate. So we have been getting some excellent data on this over the last several years, and in particular, what was really interesting that they shared with us about this at the last meeting was that these questions now, we will have data to compare pre-pandemic versus during our COVID closures, and it will provide us some excellent data to look at the, all different forms of quality across our district. As you can see, the questions talk about everything from curriculum strength and variety, there's problem solving, family and school relationships, and the way that MCIA is thinking about this and working with their partner districts is that everything is on a continuum, so it is, they're still thinking about the terms across the top, the, the warning, the watch, the growth, the approval, and the ideal. That is just a way for districts to think about which things that they are enacting that are felt really strongly by their student and educator community, and then things that might indicate areas, and this is where I thought it was really exciting for school committees, in the areas that might provide, provide areas for growth as we move forward as a district, as we set district goals, and as we think about talking to each other and the community about the strengths of our district that go beyond just how we score in the MCAS. The data that you're seeing here is just from the pandemic closure, the results across the bottom there. It's important to note across the top that they're asking questions about teachers and leadership, school culture, the resources, the academic learning, and the community and well-being. Eventually, when this is out of its draft stage and up and available for the public to be able to access more readily, you'll not only be able to see Winchester's results on this data, but also the other partner districts of MCIEA. So we basically just took a short overview of this in our last curriculum subcommittee meeting. We had so much interest in it that we've asked if they'll come back and talk to us about it further as they build out this website and our ability to sort of dig in deep and analyze this data. The other place that, as a subcommittee, we saw this being really powerful, is comparing this data against other data that we might have in the districts, like the YRBS. We might begin to see some ideas coalesce around certain areas that the district might really want to focus on for growth and resource development. Jen, did you have anything? Is there anything I missed, or? I think that's great. We did talk briefly about the performance-based assessments, and there was also some exciting information about that. MCIEA particularly worked closely with students at Winchester High School last year, and again, we just took a short overview of that, and we hope to dig a little bit more deeply into that and come back with you with some more information about how students are feeling around PBAs, particularly it, the, the research study that they did with our students was particularly interesting in the quotes that they had directly from students about how students are feeling about PBAs, particularly since this committee in the past has been interested in social emotional learning and development, and the PBAs spoke directly to some of that. So we hope to have some more information on that for you in the future. If anyone has more questions about this or the PBAs, I, we'd love to hear them from you and to bring them back to the subcommittee for when we hear from MCIEA again. So, Jen, did I capture all that?
I think you did.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting to, maybe we can ask our student representatives some questions about what their experience has been like with the PBAs.
Yeah, that would be great. The other, we also heard from Mr. Mahoney at the high school and Mr. Lynn at the middle school about any of the Program of Studies changes. At the high school, there were the changes that you see here on this slide, to English language, English language arts, they're looking to expand the reading selections within the 11th grade classes beyond exclusively British literature. So this isn't particularly a, a class change, but more just an expansion and a rethinking of the reading selections that they'll be using within the curriculum and with the students. The students, I think themselves, were looking for some choices beyond the classic British literature as well, so I think they're responding to that also. In science, they're looking to change the neuroscience elective and eliminate the biotechnology elective, and looking to change the environmental science elective and swap it for, swap, in a swap for marine science. Jen, am I, am I right in the, the environmental science would then encompass?
No, they just swapped what years?
Swapped what years?
So that students in the 10th grade could access, didn't have to take the traditional pathway, they could take environmental earlier if they wanted to.
Okay. In electives, they're going to change to ethnic studies and eliminate philosophy, and that was based on a student demand, is that, that was correct? Yep. And they're going to expand the marketing elective content. So right now it is sports marketing, and they're going to expand that content to a focus on digital marketing. In social studies, in correlation to the new frameworks, they're going to add two new civics electives, and they will have a PBA focus. We have been making changes in the 8th grade, which we'll talk about in a minute, at the, in the social studies curriculum as per the guidelines at the state to add more civics education. So this was in response to that as well, as we add civics at the, in 8th grade, we want to be able to have electives for students at the high school to engage in as well. And civics seems like a perfect opportunity for our students to be engaging in real-life, authentic, performance-based assessments that focus on civic engagement. So all of these are cost-neutral changes, these are really swaps and updating, so there, there was no impact to our budget this year on any of these course changes.
Yes, Mr. Brady?
Thank you very much for that. Just a quick question on the philosophy, so you said that was driven by student interest, so was enrollment in philosophy was kind of dwindling over time, and it got to a point where it wasn't really sustainable to offer that as an elective?
Yeah, and they ask them each year?
Yep.
From the students?
Yeah.
And it was interesting, they had some great discussions about, like, some students wanted to focus more on, say, like, the Middle East, and some students...
Yep.
So what they came to with the students was having more of like a survey course that allows it to be the ethnic studies rather than focused on just one area, so they didn't get like five students that wanted this, five that wanted this, yeah, so. So this will be new, and we'll try this out based on the student interest, and then we'll be able to come back with feedbacks.
Oh, that's exciting.
So this was a way to provide sort of a broader range of content within that?
Yeah. And they do, in social studies, they regularly do that because social studies is the one area where students don't have to take as many years of it, so there's more electives in social studies, so they pretty regularly swap up what's offered just based on what the students are interested in, so.
And Jen, I thought the change to digital marketing was interesting as well, that was also driven by obviously current trends and trying to keep our 21st century education, and also I think it's gonna allow, appeal to a broader range of students than sports marketing alone, so I thought that was really interesting change also.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Any other questions?
Can you just tell us a little bit more about the science changes? You know, what, what drove those? Were those student, you know, their demand, or, or what changed that?
Yeah, so that was the science department working again with the students, and like I said, the Michelle B. Department does a little differently, how they survey students or talk with them, so they try to have some conversations too, not just a survey that goes out so they better understand. And there was a lot of interest in kids getting more into neuroscience, so they also wrote a grant, so this is a new, brand-new launch of this course, to be able to do some contemporary equipment and everything that the students will use as they're doing this, because that's another area for us to grow, is kind of more contemporary, hands-on materials in the science department. So that's something that with this launch, they were able to capture student interests, putting some new hands-on and tying it in with a grant to get the materials.
And I believe we, you also mentioned that we also have a, a science educator at the high school who has neurosciences a background?
Right, so we are a new director that just came in, has been working with the teachers around to what they feel comfortable to be able to have a passion around with the students too. Kind of a little bit, another game of match.com that we play. The students' interest in the staff's background. Science is, besides world language, the one area where teachers are like certified in a specific area, not just like math or English, it's for any grade, but science and world language, they're certified in a specific area.
So Jen, I thought it was exciting what you also just briefly touched on, that I'm not sure people necessarily, I, I just wanted to reemphasize, was that it's really interesting the process at the high school, that the teachers actually engage the students in conversation. It's not just a paper and pencil survey idea, but where they have authentic conversations with the kids in the classes each year, sort of as they're teaching content and as they're rethinking the classes for the following year, to really have that student engagement at the high school, I think is really important in having kids having ownership of their learning too, and being able to try to meet that with the expertise of our staff.
Yeah. I think it's great, they really try to follow like their passions where they can, I think that's a place we can continue to grow, not just the road of what we think is best on a transcript for college. Certainly, there are certain things they need, we want to make sure everyone has what they need, but then not always staying in what we've always kind of traditionally, the world's changing, and following their interests is just one of the best ways to learn, so.
I liked seeing the catapult experiments. I can't, I can't remember where I saw that, but it was online and I thought the pictures were great, the kids looked so excited about it, so. Mr. Hopcraft?
I, I appreciate that, I, that makes sense to me, I, I think that's a good approach. The thing that stuck out to me is just that, you know, we're, we're living seven miles north of probably the, the number one biotech life sciences hub in the world, so that, that was the thing that jumped out at me.
Right. Yeah. And that's a, I would be shocked if Mr. Nixon doesn't ask his question, but...
Well, give me a minute.
That's what I asked for. This is the first time I've heard it, so let's let it...
Haven't spoken yet.
I've heard of it, but...
But I think it's always a balance, what we're trying to do of like what we think is like good for them, and then what they're interested in, and then having somebody who can teach that well, so. I mean, to me, like, I think biotech is, I mean, something that is contemporary, and but the interest has been dwindling, there's more interest in this, that teacher's retiring, there's other teachers that can teach this, so I think it's a, but it could be something that we find out in a year or two that students want to bring back, and I think we should continue to do that too.
Yeah. Right. Just to reflect on it, and I'm supportive of the approach you're taking, I, I think you're right that the teacher, teachers have a tremendous influence, you know, I, I know when certain robotics teachers are here, you know, robotics is very popular and interesting, another growth area, and so, so I know you have to balance all that, but, but so thank you for that.
Yeah, sure.
I like to see that the students can provide some feedback on the courses, and that their feedback is heard, so I think that's exciting.
Yeah, and it's good because we have multiple data points, we have what they try to sign up for on the courses, right, so we know where there were more students that wanted something than we were able to schedule, but then we also have the conversations and in the department pieces, so I like the multiple ways to hear from students, so. And we still have, by the way, this is all fabulous, but we still have room to grow in this area for sure, so.
Is there a second slide after this one?
For middle school? Yes. This is it, this is the extent of the changes at the high school for next year.
This is where I think I want to talk about Mandarin.
Oh, I was waiting for the journalism question.
I thought, no, I, I've tried, you know I haven't given up.
I've heard it each year.
We did talk about it in curriculum subcommittee, you'll be happy to know.
Yes.
I'm gonna let journalism go this year, so I... I'm going to let journalism go this year, so I, I want to, you know, part of this is a mayor culpa on my part because it involves some assumptions that I had going into our budget hearing. So when we talked about adding Mandarin at the high school, it was super important to me. I had some direct conversations with Dr. Hackett about, you know, the priority given. What we've said about this initiative some time ago, and some committee members may well remember a certain town meeting where we even got a motion from the floor to increase our budget so that we could add a non-Western world language, which was, you know, a wonderful gesture, right? That was pre-override, so we said not yet, but thank you. I assumed that when we were going to be adding Mandarin at the high school, we would be adding level one and two. We offer level one in Spanish, Italian, and Latin. We don't offer it in French, and Dr. Ellen Emma may remember, I pushed hard on that a few years ago. I think we even tried one year just to see and there, there just wasn't enough interest there. The district really, to, to put it one way, really knows its French students really well. I don't know there's any other way to say it. So we really didn't have kind of that critical mass of interest in French. But we, the last time we tried to introduce Mandarin, we did it at the high school and there was interest in level one, and we did it for two or three years, but the issue was we, we kind of started it in the wrong place and we all, we all realized we should have started it younger and then naturally more and more students, you know, can sort of feed into that pipeline. So a couple of observations I have about this draft of the schedule of courses. So, you know, in each of the world languages, we have kind of an introductory paragraph that describes kind of what the goals are, our aspirations about how we teach that language, so we don't have that yet for Mandarin, but I can sort of understand why, so this is a draft. This is proposing to offer Mandarin to sort of college prep and honors level, and it's very clear that it's for students who've already successfully completed Mandarin in grades six, seven, and eight. So I, as I have said, you know, years ago at this table, it frustrated me even when we only offered world language in grades seven and eight because it meant if you're a sixth grader in the spring and you really want to take like Italian and you rank it number one, but you get Spanish, it means you have to wait until you're a high school freshman to get another bite at the apple. That always just made me sick. I believe that since the first time we tried to introduce Mandarin with some success, but I mean at the high school. We're of course a bigger district, we have more students. I believe anecdotally there's greater interest in it. I think having that started at McCall brings some, some sort of latent interest. I, I hear on some authority, there's already chatter in the hallways of, you know, McCall about, oh, what's Mandarin like? Isn't it really hard and so forth? And, you know, as peers sort of take it and say, oh, you know, no, I, I'm, I'm having a good time, you know? You can imagine where I'm going with this. I, I think we could do a good thing badly if we're introducing Mandarin and we're limiting it to level two. And I would strongly urge that we do it at level one. So I understand I'm sort of deducing that that point four FTE in the budget was really just to support level two. I should have asked that question? I didn't, that was an assumption on my part. I wonder what the committee thinks about it, but I think if we're really being, if, if we say what we mean and mean what we say, we would be offering that, but there would be a cost for that. And then I would then have to turn to Dr. Hackett and say, given the size of the budget and, you know, what we did about kind of splitting that structural deficit for sped, a point two FTE is 13,000 bucks and a point four is 26, you know, grand. And the town manager hasn't released a budget yet, you know? We could have a conversation, we could certainly amend the budget if we felt it was important to do, unless, you know, the superintendent felt like we have enough sort of room in, in that budget to make that kind of adjustment, if it's one the school committee would even entertain. But I feel, I feel very strongly we should be offering Mandarin for those students who would be starting the language as freshmen at Winchester High School. And I, I'm sorry I didn't answer the question earlier, that was just my assumption.
I, I just now had an idea, I don't, it's not ready for it to talk about. I just sent Dennis and James an email, but I'm wondering if we could table that and come back to it because there might be something we could do. That being said, we also need to work on our middle school schedule because I agree with you, what you pick in sixth grade shouldn't be what you have to do for three years.
Yeah.
It may mean our schedule doesn't look like, it's always looked like that all sixth grade is always all together, seventh grade, but putting some flexibility in there is, again, we should follow the students' needs and wants.
Yeah.
As best we can.
And I should clarify, so I, I should clarify, I reached out to Dr. Hackett, Dr. Ellen Emma, and Anna Torone and a, and a few others sort of when I made this observation, and I know we're not like voting the schedule of courses tonight. I only sort of raise it because if in fact the solution is an, an adjustment in the budget, then it does sort of become time-sensitive. And I don't know if that means that that's the path forward, but if there is some suggestion, it's an offline conversation, there may be other solutions with the budget we have, then I'm, I'm happy to hear that.
Mr. Brady?
I would just share that, you know, I would agree with all the points that Chris made and that if we, we are doing this, we should be offering an entry point at, in ninth grade for students who would want to take Mandarin. So whatever we needed to do to make that happen, I would certainly be supportive of. So thank you for raising that.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I did also want to add that we did talk about not offering French one at the high school, again, at curriculum subcommittee. So I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope to add Mandarin one at the high school and not also address French one at the same time again and see if there's interest in that, particularly with what we're talking about with sixth graders having to choose something at sixth grade and stick with it. There may also be students who want to switch to French one at the high school. So I think, I think this is more of an offline conversation with Dr. Ellen Emma, Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney and gauging students' interests, moving up from the middle school to the high school and seeing where we have interest and intent for kids to switch languages now that we have another offering at the middle school and potentially two, two languages missing a level one at the high school. So I, be careful what you wish for because it, it, we, and I also agree with Dr. Ellen Emma that I would like to really focus our energy on exploring different options for the middle school students to be able to explore languages more there and be able to switch a language at the middle school before they reach high school. So I think it may be a longer-term discussion too. I don't want to just add Mandarin one at the high school, particularly if we don't see interest, enough interest as we have in the past with French. So I, I think, I think it's a longer discussion.
I see it as both and. I think we can have those conversations about making some flexibility at the middle school, but I could not say it any more strongly than I did. I think it is a huge mistake not to add Mandarin one at Winchester High School in the fall, and I believe that we should do that.
I think we'd also have to add French.
When we did offer French one, we actually talked about it at the school committee table.
Right.
And the administration, you know, kind of represented, we kind of get a sense of, you know, who these kids are and what the interest is. And my memory is, not 100%, my memory is we did try it and there, just that interest wasn't there. But formally sort of that gesture was made, if you will. In this instance, it's a little different, right? Because we're, we're teaching French at the high school. We have a bolus of French teachers and some measure of FTEs at the high school. We don't have that for Mandarin, so it's kind of a, we have, I think, 40 or 41 eighth graders taking Mandarin right now. And some significant number, but who knows how many? They also may say I'm ready for Latin or Spanish or what have you. But that's, that's, I think, fantastic that there are 41 kids in just eighth grade taking Mandarin. And I have to assume most of them may want to try it at the high school. So I would like to be able to offer that opportunity for those who, for whatever reason, didn't get that opportunity, you maybe wanted to do, but were afraid to take the, the risk, as it were, you know, as a younger student, and they're ready to try it at the high school. And I, I think if we offer Mandarin one, we're, we're really making good on a pledge that we made our community some years ago.
I think it really depends, and it's been said this evening a few times, on the amount of interest from students, if there is a critical mass of students coming up or who are already at the high school who are, who would be interested in taking French or, or Mandarin. Dr. Ellen Emma and then Mr. Hopcraft.
I was just going to say, that is something we could do normally with our eighth graders because they're, we get their interest usually from their program of study selection for the eighth graders, but we could do a quick pre-survey now on their interests around languages so we knew what we were, what.
Staffing for.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
That's okay.
Mr. Hopcraft?
I was just going to comment as a father of a seventh grade Mandarin student who seems pretty excited about the opportunity. I, I think it's a, you know, a, a great area and, and I think there's some pride in taking, you know, a, a different language that's seen as hard and all this kind of stuff, but it's, it's very achievable and, and I, I have to imagine that with that kind of attitude if others share that, that friends might say, hey, this is a cool thing and might want to try to do that, not to mention the career value in it. I, I like the idea of, of any kind of offline solutions we can find and certainly data to find out whether there is demand as well as for French and, and others. I think, you know, what I'm hearing is it comes down to, does this impact the budget at all? And, and so, you know, and so I guess, yeah, that's a, over to you Frank about whether, whether you, there is any urgency that you need from us. It sounds like most of us are, are generally in, in one, one area, but do you need support in terms of increasing that FTE amount or is it something that, that maybe you guys work out offline?
I would suggest that we do what Dr. Ellen Emma suggested with, with kind of a survey, just to see what the interest would be. Then, you know, we're still early in staffing and, and scheduling, so I think we need to let this shake out a little bit. You know, I know Dr. Ellen Emma can do some investigation into it and talk to the high school and then we can come back and report that back. I, I would not anticipate if we're talking about the budget itself, you know, we'll see where the schedule goes and if there is a budget issue, then I would, I would come back. I know it doesn't time up with the town manager's budget that she will be releasing, but, you know, we'll, I think, I think we can still have the conversation and I think that, you know, by the time we get done with new hires, with potential retirements, potential changes and we, you know, we may be, we may be there, so. And we may be there with the existing point four, so depending on how the schedule shakes out, so I'd just give that a little bit of time.
And is there a sense of timing on when the schedule of courses would be completed, kind of published, shared with students and families?
So that really needs to go very soon. So what will happen is we'll probably do like an anticipated and then like we do every year, we often will have to adjust and students choose more courses than what they get, so if there was a new choice, they would turn and then they, I'd like to do this instead of this. So we'd still have that flexibility without slowing down the whole master scheduling process, which is, as you know, lengthy.
So you can appreciate why I'm asking the question because if it goes out as it's printed right now, it's really clear, we're offering Mandarin two and to take it, you have to have taken Mandarin at McCall. So that would be a concern of mine, although maybe if that introductory paragraph is developed that I think needs to be there, as we have it for all the other world languages, there might be an opportunity to say, this is a new offering, Mandarin's a new offering at Winchester High School, we're evaluating interest for level one, maybe there's even like a link or where you go to express interest or something, just so people understand, that might be an opportunity.
Or maybe then I'd have to talk to the high school, but maybe we can even.
I'd hate to sort of prematurely close the door on it.
Right, maybe we can even put it in now, even if, and with the disclaimer that it may not run.
I like that even better.
Just for many of our courses, based on enrollment levels.
You are absolutely right, and we've done that in other instances. We put classes and said it's subject to enrollment and interest. I, I favor that option.
And we could do that with all the languages.
But I do, I do think a survey ahead of time would be helpful.
Yeah.
Right, we'll get that out this week.
Because that'd be, that'd be great because then we can see, okay, this is where we are and we got to, we can work on the existing resources, see where we are from a budget standpoint.
Yeah.
So would that survey be for French and for Mandarin?
Just to see, if we had our choice of languages at the high school, what would you plan on enrolling in?
At level, another, be clear.
At level, whatever level.
Is, is Urdu in the mix because?
Are you asking that, to teach it?
No, I don't want to show off, but.
You'll be a point two, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I, I just, I have to say this because I know it's come up at other meetings too. We, one of the strengths of, of Mandarin is a, is a non-traditional sort of, or non-Western language is that there's some data out there that suggests, you know, kids with language-based learning disabilities can really perform better in that environment. We have kids who move into the dist, and particularly in Winchester, as we all know, if you build it, they will come. Where did we see the greatest increase in enrollment? It was at the high school for crying out loud. So you've got in-migration, you have out-migration, you may have kids who would, you know, LBLD is part of the package at McCall for whatever reason, are not taking it, would like to, you know? There are just many reasons why. If we could say we're going to try to do it subject to X, Y, Z, I, we're, I think we're connecting then on all fronts. My speech is complete.
I, I don't see a reason why we can't.
Again, I apologize, I should have asked this during the budget discussion.
There's a lot going on with Mr. Nixon, we probably should have been more explicit with what the point, the point four covered, so that's how it goes. It's a lot, it's a lot, it's a lot going on.
And Pam Gerard and I propose every year sign language as an element.
I was just going to say, I would love to see sign language at the highs, if we're, if we're putting in our dream languages and.
No, if we're putting out a survey, are you guys interested?
I think everyone needs to settle down a little bit here.
I would love to.
Understanding that I started it with Urdu, but.
Love to see ASL. That really speaks to inclusion.
Okay, Ms. Bergstrom, I think you had.
A second slide.
Middle school coming up.
This one's really easy, just per changes in the DESI social studies frameworks, eighth grade is now going to focus on civics education. I presume they are also going to look for opportunities to do performance-based assessments that are directly tied to living and breathing civics as well as learning civics in the classroom as well.
Good news, I have something great to say about the DESI, that's actually required, so.
There you go.
It has to be project-based, something at eighth grade and something at high school.
And we are excited to do it. And that is the only change at the middle school.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the program of studies or with curriculum subcommittee?
So would this come back like for an action item at the next meeting? Is that the idea, ish?
Yes, ish.
Okay.
That would be correct. Okay, so before we move into our next item, the Lynch School Project update, I would just like to ask the school committee if we might have consensus around reopening public comment briefly as we had our technological issue, so, and I believe our participant has come.
So moved.
Second. I'm very nervous.
Thank you.
Don't mean any disrespect.
No worries. If you'd like to just take a seat, if you'd like to take a seat and then just use the speaker.
Oh, sorry.
So you're on Wind Cam as well, Mr. Carlin, not to make you more nervous, but.
Seventeen parents with 23 children that were trying to log into your Zoom meeting and it was never opened, just so you know, that's why I came here. We were all on Zoom waiting.
Okay.
When we all wanted to watch and see what you guys were talking about.
Okay, well, we appreciate your coming.
I'm sorry?
We appreciate your coming, so thank you very much.
And again, I mean no disrespect, but I, I really have to get something off my chest here.
Yes.
I'm disappointed in, in you guys, to be quite frankly. You know, I've known for 18 months, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I've known for 18 months, I've, I've looked at the studies from Israel, Germany, Europe, from around the world, Sweden, Amsterdam, Holland, Netherlands. We've known for a long time masks, like all these cloth masks you have on right now, even the CDC today says, does nothing for you. What we do know is that masking children, according to Johns Hopkins study of 27 other studies from Europe and around the world, does nothing. It has zero benefits and is very negligible. Point 0.2% of children under 16 without an underlying condition have died worldwide. That's 1,800 kids worldwide in two and a half years, or two years and two months, whatever it is. So there is no benefit to this. What we do know is it does harm our kids, especially for teenage girls like my daughter. This mask right here, when she has it on all day, causes severe acne. New study out of Germany and Israel, again, if I know this, why don't you know it? Causes severe acne, which any teenage girl or anybody who's ever been to high school knows, if you have severe acne, causes depression, anxiety, it causes mental health issues. These masks are causing my daughter and all of our children mental health issues. The suicide rate, depression rate, anxiety is five times higher now, five times higher now. I encourage all of you to read the article out of the Atlantic magazine, which goes into detail about everything I'm saying right now. This mask mandate is doing way more harm than it is good. If you look at Texas, Florida, all the countries in Europe, around the world, it's, it's beyond repair. The autism rate has spiked because children can't see sarcasm, they can't recognize facial expressions. can't see sarcasm. They can't recognize facial expressions. When somebody's being sarcastic and they smile, the kid doesn't know they're smiling because there's a mask on. And hear me now and believe me in three years, the autism rate in Winchester, Massachusetts is going to spike beyond belief. That's a fact. Again, that's another study. If I know this, why don't you? I will say that the health department, I know that you guys are going to say it's up to the state health or the Winchester Board of Health that determines the mask, but why haven't you fought back on it? Why haven't you said, we're not going to require it? After everything we now know, and especially last week, CDC, Johns Hopkins study, Europe, Germany, Israel, Sweden, everybody has put out and said, it does nothing except harm our children. I have to tell you right now, my personal experience and every parent, again, I have 17 parents and 23 students at McCall Middle School, 23 students at McCall, and these are just people that I know personally. We're all fed up with it. The kids are literally talking about staging a walkout. We, we can't put up with this anymore. Again, that mask you have on, you have on, everybody in here has on, does nothing. Look at the own, look at the CDC's own website. Cloth masks do nothing. It doesn't prevent Omicron, it doesn't prevent the spread. And more importantly, we have Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, Illinois, even California easing restrictions. Why is my kid still wearing a mask at school? We know it does nothing, except maybe cause acne, depression, mental illness. So why is she still wearing it? Why are you still wearing it in this room? It does nothing. It doesn't protect you. The second thing I'd like to talk about is I was made aware this morning by several parents of English assignment. I've long known the history department at McCall Middle School is out of control with propaganda. You know, as you know, what was it, two years ago, we had a big issue with the history teacher telling them that Republicans were evil, they wanted to kill everybody. We had a big discussion about that. I was made aware of the English department last year. One of the assignments that I was sent this morning by three other parents was basically saying that Christians were bad and North Korea, China were good because of elderly people. I since learned that's actually in one of the books. And I thought it was a job of the school committee to look at these books and approve them. Can, I'm a Catholic, I'm a Christian, and I would like to, I would like for someone in this room to explain to me why that book is allowed and why that assignment is allowed in your English class at McCall Middle School. Dr. Hackett, I can get you that assignment. I'll forward you the text where it shows everything. And just know, it wasn't just one parent. It was three or four parents.
And I'd be happy to talk to you.
I'll send it to you.
Okay. Mr. Curlin, just, just see...
You really have to, you really have to keep on top of this, man. I mean, you know, the studies, again, I'm not the smartest person in the world, but if I know this for 18 months, as you know, I've been emailing you for a long time. I've been emailing James Lynn for a long time. I've been screaming to the state government for a long time. If I know this, why don't y'all? If you, why don't you know that cloth masks do nothing except harm kids? If I've known this forever, if Germany, Sweden, Israel, Netherlands, Holland, if Johns Hopkins, if everybody's known this, why don't you? It does nothing but harm my daughter and quite frankly, it upsets me. I mean, it's my, it's my 13-year-old daughter. And I'm concerned about her well-being and her mental health. And if she can't see anything below here, it stunts her growth. It also, and if you look at your reading proficiency at McCall Middle School over the past year, just look it up, it's went down, what, 8%?
So...
Because kids can't see facial expressions and can't read the teacher's lips. Your autism rate, hear me now, believe me in two years, is going to spike big time.
So thank you very much, Mr. Curlin. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Sorry for the difficulties this evening. Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All on paper.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. And so now we will resume with the next item on our business under reports and discussion items, which is the Lynch School Project Update. And the EFPBC has been working busily to winnow down and select a recommended option for the Lynch School Project to send forward for the next milestone to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, for, for the preferred schematic report, the PSR, which is due on March 3. And EFPBC members, Dr. Hackett and Mr. Nixon and Mr. Jay Nardone had gone to the Select Board's meeting last night to discuss these options. And I had also joined in support from the school committee. So, Mr. Nixon, would you like to provide a further update for us?
I'm just going to ask Dr. Hackett if he can tag team with me for a minute. If you could scroll down there to the bottom. So Dr. Hackett is on the project website, which is lynch2025.com. Scroll down to the very bottom. You'll see, it's always a good place to look. There, there's the schedule. So what was driving the conversation last night, both with the EFPBC and subsequently with the Select Board, is as the committee knows, we've already submitted the preliminary design program. That includes that space summary that Mr. Hay and Mr. Blessing came in and shared with the school committee. We talked about how many classrooms and how many pre-K and all that goes with it. And Dr. Hackett's educational plan was incorporated in that as well. So then the next piece that's due to the MSBA is on March 3, and that's what's called that preferred schematic report. And if I can ask Frank, if you could go to the design page for a moment, click over there. So we, we, we started off looking at 11 different options. And as you scroll down towards the bottom of the page, you'll see that grid. All this information is still there, kind of provided, there you go, kind of chronologically for everybody. The MSBA requires communities participating in the core replacement program to evaluate a renovation option, add renovation options, meaning you renovate and then you add on to the building. By the way, Winchester High School is a perfect example of that. That was, that was mostly a renovation. I mean, a gut renovation, but mostly renovation and a modest addition. We also have to look at new build or replacement options, which is what we did with the Vincento Elementary School. So early on in this process, there were 11 options. And if I can ask Dr. Hackett, sort of slowly scroll up the page, we went from 11 down to six, and then from six, we went to four. And, and those four options that we arrived at, that's a good slide right there, Dr. Hackett, with the, the section diagrams.
Okay, got it. Yep.
So those four, those final four, if you will, included the straight-up renovation. It included an add renovation, which is AR2, you see there at the bottom. And that was also presented last night in, in more detail. By the way, we, we worked really hard to get information on the website, but since we literally just had the meeting this week, it's not up yet, but we'll have maybe by the end of the week some more detail. So we identified a preferred, if you will, add reno option. And there were multiple ones that the EFPBC looked at. And then we were down to two different options for a full replacement, so-called N5 and N6, N meaning new. And so the committee was really, the chief difference between N5 and N6, kind of from a packaging point of view, was the distribution of some of the educational program. So how many grade levels on the middle floor, particularly, you know, first grade. If we think about our youngest learners down on the lower floor, pre-K and kindergarten, does that include first grade? Does first grade go up to, you know, to the middle floor? And what are the consequences of some of that packaging? So that was really the, one of the key differences, but there were some other site, you know, differences and so forth. So anyway, that was kind of our, our, our four. We had to get down to a final three. And so we actually did that on, we did that at the previous meeting. We narrowed down to N5 as our preferred replacement option. But of course, that still left us officially three on the table. The renovation option simply doesn't work. And up there in the upper left-hand corner, that is really just a non-starter. It doesn't meet the educational program, the building, it's not big enough. I mean, you can imagine this, right? If you just go in and renovate Lynch, there's, there's no way, with the Lynch we have today, for instance, they had seven pre-K classrooms and that was the only thing we were trying to do. And we're looking to do much more. So we expect the MS, the MSBA will look at that and say, well, yes, of course, that clearly doesn't work. And then they will pivot and look more carefully at an add reno option and then the new build option. So what, what we did last night at the EFPBC, it feels like it was a week ago, but I guess it was yesterday. So a lot of, you know, debate and discussion, TAPA brought much more detail to the table. And the, the preference was to actually choose N5 as the preferred option that will be submitted with the PSR. But between now and that submittal in March, the TAPA team still has a lot of work to do. So they're going to continue to develop kind of what some of the site options will look like. They're going to work really hard on phasing and logistics, which is something I'll ask Frank to talk about in a moment, in terms of swing space and kind of engaging with the Lynch community. They are going to work on developing some concepts around building systems. We have a sustainability subcommittee with a, some significant goals to achieve. They'll be meeting next week. And that includes Mr. Marin, who's our operations director, Mr. Lawson from DPW, and Ken Pruitt, who's our sustainability director. So there's just a lot of work. Now that we've sort of said this is our preferred option, now there's just a lot of work to really build those additional details for the MSBA. So they'll be doing that. That will be submitted in March. And if I can ask Dr. Hackett, if you can go back to that homepage for a moment and scroll down to the bottom of the schedule, go to the homepage, actually.
Yes.
So once this goes in, there is a facility assessment review that's conducted with the MSBA that you see there. Let's see, facilities assessment subcommittee, that's in late March. Again, there's, there's some work required to prepare for that, but it's not particularly heavy lift. It's, I mean, it's straightforward. It's not sort of controversial, if you will. Just a lot of work to do to prepare for it. That's looking at the existing facility, sort of validating that that reno piece just really isn't going to work. Then the next key date really comes on April 27, when we're hoping for the MSBA board to, if you will, validate our choice and say, okay, N5 is really the way to go. We, we, we agree. And then once again, we're sort of off to the races. So you can sort of tell, there's been this flurry of activity. And then you kind of twiddle your thumbs for a little while and you wait on the MSBA. Once that, once that vote comes in April, then the design team really starts working very hard, taking that preferred option, we hope is N5, and developing it frankly, even further. And the, and once they do that, we'll have a much more detailed, for instance, construction cost. I, a much, much better sense of what kind of swing space do we need? Can we just, can we do it here at Parkhurst on the upper floor? And if that's what we're going to do, you know, our central office really moving out. So we've got a lot of stuff we have to kind of figure out. But that will all kind of inform the cost of the project. That will come to fall town meeting as part of the project funding agreement, which you see there. And hopefully with town meeting support, then we go out for a debt exclusion override we expect in January. And in addition to all this stuff, we will begin to have some conversations about what our preferred project delivery method will be. We can choose a traditional design bid-build approach, where the architect literally prepares complete construction documents. You send them out on the street, you get a bid, you hire a contractor. We can also pursue a CM-at-risk method, where the builder becomes much more involved before the drawings are totally complete. We have experience with both. We did design bid-build on VO, we did a CM-at-risk on the high school. There are some opportunities and challenges with both and, and some cost consequences as well. So just many more kind of substantial conversations to have moving forward. But having sucked almost all the oxygen out of the room, I wonder if Dr. Hackett could just take a moment and talk about, now that we've picked that option, that the phasing and logistics work that TAPA is going to be doing, and you've got some ideas about how you may engage the, the Lynch community to help them kind of understand what some of those options are and get some parent feedback.
Right.
That I think will be important.
So thank you, Ms. Nixon. When, we've had this discussion at the, with the EFPBC about, and the architects about swing space, obviously, depending on what option was chosen, it was going to be, it could have been everything from, we have to have all students off-site. Of course, that's what architects and contractors would love us to do. We know that that would be a huge lift and whether it's even doable. But as we've gone through this process of narrowing, narrowing down and getting to this point, when TAPA comes back on the 16th, they will have a better handle on exactly what would be required, the timeline and kind of what the phasing would look like. At that point, we would know better what the, what the needs might be. What I don't want to do is, is have people get over anxious about us looking at options that may or may not exist. We, we still have enough time to talk about swing space and how we're going to try to phase that in. A critical component of that, obviously, is having conversations with staff, administration staff and parents. And I think that it allows us some good opportunity to really hear from them. And, you know, I, my experience has been that the, the biggest challenge with this is people don't know what they're going to experience. So whatever it is and wherever we, however we do it, it's going to be novel experience for them. I can tell you, having gone through construction projects and occupied renovation projects, that it, there's, there will be and people will recognize that this is a construction project happening on-site. And it has a lot of implications for teaching and learning. I mean, they were cutting down a tree out here behind my office today, and I thought they were in my office. It was just so loud. So I think that that's the challenge, is helping people understand what the experience would be versus them not being in that environment and us having them elsewhere. But again, I, having more information from TAPA and getting that on the 16th would allow us to really start to explore with parents and staff, you know, kind of what the possibilities might be. And, you know, while I have some initial ideas, I would like to obviously hear from others as well before I start rolling things out. Although I do think it would be good and potentially important if we could try to phase this in over the, the course of the project. So once the project is approved, town meeting or with a vote, then we might be able to talk about how we could phase in over time before the construction actually started. And part of what the thinking would be, just in general conceptual terms, would be that potentially new students, incoming kindergarten, or first grade, as opposed to having fifth grade students who have spent their entire life in that building and have those events that go around with being a fifth grader and, and, you know, moving on to the middle school. So that is just some of my initial thinking and of just having experiences with this and that what parents might be looking for. We would obviously have to think about siblings and different grade levels and transportation and all of it. So there are a lot of logistics to it, but I, the, the point really being that we will be, I will be reaching out and putting together a group to get some feedback on it and some suggestions and some ideas. And once we have a little more information about the site, how the, how the construction traffic will happen, where it'll come in, what they really need, the, kind of the, right now, the range is eight to 12 classrooms to remove from the site. That's outside of the four pre-K classrooms that we've already brought to Parker. So that would be additional eight to 12. So, so we'll hear what they have to say on, on the 16th.
And expressed another way, that eight to 12 classrooms really reflects either two or three grade levels.
Right, right.
Right? And some of those, my expectation is there will be certain, certain things will become more sort of real or obvious to us faster than others. It has been suggested very strongly, although it needs the study, that is most likely, one of those two entrances is going to be closed to parents and students in yellow buses because it will need to be reserved for construction, for labor, for materials, lay-down area, et cetera. So that obviously has consequences. And I was just impressed the other night, TAPA has gone out and counted every single parking space. They, they know how many, you know, teachers and staff are in the building. So if one has to not only take down a part of the building, we're also going to lose parking. And so one has to know if we, if we're able to, let's say, just only need to move eight classrooms or two grade levels, how much parking do we have left? And does that still work for the, do we have room for teachers to like actually come to work? So it's, it, they are looking at this carefully. That was clear to me from the meeting the other night. But we kind of wanted to get through kind of the priority, you know, of which scheme we really wanted to move on. I'm really interested in what they're going to bring forward at the, at the next meeting. So onward and upward, we just keep going. Website continues to be, continues to be a good place for information. If you can go to the presentations page real quick, just the last plug, and I want to thank WindCam.
Which one is it?
Just go up, up to the top and then click on, if you go to the top banner, at the very top, and then click on presentations on the right, Frank. You just may have to like reduce your screen size. There you go. Go down to presentations. Just really want to say thank you to WindCam. As you scroll down there slowly, Frank, WindCam is broadcasting these EFPBC meetings live on the education channel. They're able to do that because we're obviously not having a school committee meeting at the time. They make the video available to us, so we put that up on the website so people can go there and watch these previous meetings. And then we also have, I don't know why Dr. Hackett doesn't have permission. If other people are seeing this, let me know. I want to figure this out. I've not gotten this from anybody. But what you should be able to see is all the presentations that TAPA actually brings to the EFPBC. So for some reason, some are showing up and some aren't. But it's early, we'll work out the bugs. This is just going to continue to grow over time. So when people have questions, you know, this, this should be a good place to go and get the information. Dr. Hackett's educational plan is actually right there, the bottom of that webpage, the, the 57 or however many pages it was, or 453, as you may recall. 57 or however many pages it was, or 453, as you may recall. It's all there. So if you hear, if people, if people are looking for information they can't find on the website, let me or let Tom know, and we want to address that.
I would just add one more thing. So, and it's been described by others, that sometimes the MSBA process is kind of a hurry up and away. So the push to get the PDP in on January 18th was, as you know, from the development of the education plan, all the work that everyone else had to do from the architects and design and EFPBC, now we're going to get feedback to that. And the feedback could come, and we'll have to respond to the feedback as part of the PSR submission, and the feedback could come the week of that. So, the turnaround will be quick, and my experience has been that MSBA does provide a lot of feedback. So we are, we'll just be on standby to try to turn that around as quickly as possible. This is really a tight condensed timeline, which we knew going in, so.
And just to remind the committee, that space summary that we voted, you know, that may not be exactly what we wind up with. You know, there may be a little back and forth with the MSBA on a couple of grade levels, but I certainly am very hopeful there will be support and really no debate on that expanded pre-K.
And if I could, the only other thing I would add, and then I'll stop, is I just want you to know that I had, we had a volunteer, voluntary meeting with Lynch staff, probably Dr. Alanama, two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago. Dr. Alanama joined us, we took them through, specifically, we took them through N5 and 6, and we had those vertical cutouts to show kind of what that, some of those early adjacencies would look like. Talked about pre-K and K on grade on the first floor, talked about 1, 2, and 3 on the second floor, talked about first grade on the ground level floor. We had, you know, decent, really good, a small but very involved group who showed up for that. And, you know, one of the things when we came back to, and it is, does have an impact on design in terms of that footprint, if there's three grade levels on that ground floor, obviously the footprint gets expanded. Versus if there's two grades on the first floor and then building out the third, three on the, three on the second, excuse me, and then two on the, on the third, it does condense the footprint of the building, which as we know, given that site, is extremely tight. So, we did do that feedback round. I did make the recommendation as a result of that, that we would go with the three on the second floor, so pre-K and K on the first floor, and then 1, 2, and 3 on the second floor. What's critical in the next phases of this is the adjacencies, how the bathrooms are aligned and clustered for different kids, how, what the cooperative group spaces look like. So, we'll see more of that within the next couple of weeks, when we start to see a little bit more detail on some of the kind of floor plan layouts. So, thank you.
So, after a very productive EFPBC meeting, there, we were invited, so Mr. Nardone, Dr. Hackett, Karen and I, and the design team then met with the select board last night for, it was kind of two things, general Lynch project update, but also a very kind of explicit conversation about the well field parcel that we, this committee has already discussed and expressed interest in. I think Tappe did a really good job kind of making clear, N5 requires the well field parcel. We can submit, as I think we've said before, we can submit that preference to the MSBA in March, even though the property is not yet under the control of the district. That's not a problem. However, the board will not take any vote on it until it is under the control of the district. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the select board, because after some conversation last night, there just was very strong support from both management and unanimous support from the board to say, it absolutely makes sense to do it. And so there was a motion and a second, and they've directed management to develop an article for the spring warrant for that transfer. So, I think, you know, I speak for all of us when I say thank you, that's really consequential. If there was any concern about doing that, it would have a real impact on our development options for the Lynch project. And because they actually were willing to take that action last night, our OPM is very appreciative, because that will actually be made very clear to the MSBA in the PSR submittal. So it's not ours yet, but to be able to say the select board has taken this action unanimously with the support of management will really go a long way towards sort of easing any anxieties that senior staff may have. So, really appreciate that.
Mr. Hopcraft.
Well, thank you for that. That was very, very helpful, very informative. I'm excited that, you know, I think N5 and N6 were, you know, my preferred directions. Wanted to, and I guess I recognize that decisions probably made, so it's not changeable. So, if that's the case, but, I'm trying to think of how to phrase things. If it was, any group of stakeholders that provides input is a sample, and there may be other people outside of that sample who may have other views. And if we're past this gate, perhaps, you know, we could do some additional conversation with, in particular, first grade teachers, to see if there are ways to make it as easy for them in terms of the spacing and location of stuff, or, you know, kids coming in and out and things like that. I heard some feedback that, you know, some of the first grade teachers may have preferred to be on the ground level. And so, and again, it was about kid, you know, first graders up and downstairs and time and things like that. And some of that can be addressed with architecture, I believe. So, you know, there may be ways to mitigate that, because I understand, you know, that page is turned. The, I also wanted to just put out or confirm that there's a strong, I believe consensus here, but certainly within the Lynch community, that we'd be able to control the temperature and humidity of the building in a way that feels like it is air-conditioned. And I believe that I've heard, usually when I say, is it going to be air-conditioned here, it's going to be conditioned air, but just to assure folks that we plan to have the building be at a, be able to control the temperature and the humidity so that it is comfortable year-round, summertime, et cetera. You know, that's a strong concern. On traffic, you know, I understand the need to have a construction access, and I live over on the Pond Street side, and I, but I actually drop off my son on the other side lately in this weather. I imagine we'd be closing off the Brantwood side. Maybe it's not decided yet, but just in terms of the amount of traffic that backs up in the neighborhood on the other side and the inability to back up on the Brantwood side, just, it seems that you couldn't add more cars to that side. In fact, I go to the other side in part because it's so crowded on this side. However, as I drive from the Pond Street side around, between Winter Pond and Little Winter Pond and around, the flow of children that I see flowing towards the school and down Pond Street and up Wildwood and whatnot, not to mention the people who must live right in that neighborhood by there, I'm wondering if we might be able to consider some at least pedestrian access on that side, given that it's not a normal, a lot of schools you can just drive around the block.
Could you just clarify pedestrian access on which side?
On the side that's closed, which I assume would be the Brantwood.
The Brantwood side.
Don't be so sure.
Okay, well, well.
But whichever is closed, you're just saying provide some collateral sort of for kids to be able to get to the site, yeah?
Yeah, and so that actually suggests another thing. So, yes, it's such a long way around, and so many kids walk to school, that it would be, you'd be shifting a lot of kids' entire mode of transportation, because they'd have to now be driven to school instead of walking. And it strikes me that there are probably ways, even through the woods there, that you could get people down there. I was making an assumption about which side would be closed, and if it's the other side, I think we need to have some consideration for how drop-off works and parking and things like that, because it's already like beyond capacity on both sides. But on the, on the neighborhood side, you know, I literally park like two blocks away, so I'm not in the crush of traffic that's trying to get in there. And then I walk on that side. And you can do that, because it's, you know, there's more space there, it's not so busy. But so, we'd have to think about traffic on the other side. But then lastly, you know, I've heard mixed things about, you know, living through the construction with, you know, with the, in favor of living through the construction, the, I don't want to lose that sense of community that I have with Lynch, and otherwise, it would be nice not to be living through this. And so just as we think about swing space and moving kids, because I think, I think one would be helpful to be very clear about what the experience would be like if people are going to be there. And then also be clear about how we can try to maintain community if we're moving kids. Are we moving, you know, can we move entire, you know, grade units together, for instance, if we're coming over here to Parkhurst? You know, because there isn't that much mixing grade to grade, but just, you know, thinking about how do we keep that Lynch-iness, you know, if we're just being blended in with all the other schools for a few years? So, those were, hold on a moment.
So, can I, if I can just respond to two things real quick. So, no decision has been made about, you know, which side of the site will be closed and what will be open. There are, you know, opportun, pros and cons of each. Just a quick observation is on the Horn Pond Brook side, we have a bridge. It was substantially rebuilt about four years ago. It was not designed for, you know, full tri轴s with excavated material or loaded concrete trucks. It's also not a particularly pedestrian-friendly bridge, although that's kind of where you have to go. So we were just at the EFPBC meeting this week, kind of throwing out ideas like, gee, what if we actually built a pedestrian bridge over Horn Pond Brook? And, you know, Michelle has mentioned to me, opportunities maybe with infrastructure funding that's coming, you know, to the state, that might be kind of something to look at. Probably not something the MSBA would want to participate in, but what a cool opportunity. So like the kids at VO, particularly the older kids, at the end of the day, they walk through the science park, they walk through the woods and get picked up on Amberwood Drive. You know, there's some really kind of cool opportunities. But just as a practical matter, there may just be some physical limitations to kind of where folks can come in and out. And with respect to the air conditioning piece, I want to be really clear, because I think I've said this before, we made a huge mistake on VO. I feel horrible about what happened on VO. I think there was, there was kind of some breakdown in communication, a lack of leadership. I was on the school committee at the time, I take some ownership for that. But when we, I think when people say air conditioning, they may think of a traditional compressor-condenser system. There are multiple, with today's technology, there are some interesting opportunities in terms of how you actually cool air, de-humidify air, circulate air, all of which this design team is just expert in. But we have to be very, very deliberate about kind of setting what our expectations are for what that environment is going to be like all four seasons, so that teachers can teach and kids can learn, and it's comfortable. And I'm confident we'll find a way to do that.
Okay, one more question. On the closing of the entrance, and I hadn't thought about the bridge, that's an interesting one, just to consider, if there's any way to have, it's only, you know, an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, you know, if there's a way to have the construction entrance, you say it is on the Brantwood side, could the construction folks not be using it and just like, you know, swing a fence over and let, you know, parents and students come in and then shut it off, and then have it go back, you know, like during the drop-off and pickup hours, be able to use both? Just to consider, as you're doing this, maybe it's not feasible, but.
Good questions.
I just have a couple of quick things.
Ms. Bergstrom.
One, I just wanted to thank you for getting feedback on the swing space. I think it's important for people to understand that it's not a choice in how swing space is going to happen, because there's going to be a lot of competing interests. But to have some voice in how that happens, I think is important, both from, not both, but from the educators, from the architectural firm, from the construction firm, because we're going to have to be able to put all those pieces together to come up with the best plan for swing space. So, I really appreciate sort of the more holistic look at that and letting everybody provide feedback, so that when we think about the choices, we can balance all those different interests. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure that when you said that you spoke with all the educators about the plan that you were putting in place, that, and had feedback on Plan 5 and Plan 6, I presume, you said the Lynch educators, I presume that includes Ms. Casey in the preschool was represented in that as well?
So you do not have to worry about feedback from Ms. Casey?
Excellent.
Or the preschool.
Or the preschool.
Excellent.
They are very good discipline.
It's live and in person.
You just said Lynch, so I just wanted to confirm.
I have open office hours almost daily, unannounced, but they are. And Ms. Casey is extremely diligent, and she's been a great resource, and I really am joking, but I'm joking a little bit. But we, we talk often, so we treat, we are treating that a little bit separately, just because of, it's going to have some separate needs.
Right, separate issues.
Yes.
Right.
And the Lynch staff, I want to be clear, was a voluntary after-school Zoom meeting.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah. And to, and I'm going to try to make this quick to a point, Mr. Hopcraft made about first grade teachers. I want to be careful in how we think about the classrooms at Lynch too, as we move forward. And while we've identified them as pre-K or K or 1 on the diagrams, perhaps we want to start thinking about them as pre-K and then primary versus intermediate, because knowing the fluctuations that we have in class sizes from year to year, knowing that our population can change, I just don't want to constrain our thinking around that that classroom is always going to be a kindergarten classroom, that classroom is always going to be a first grade classroom. I think we need to be building primary classrooms that can serve flexibly K through 2, and then intermediate classrooms that can serve 3 through 5. Knowing, knowing one school I was in, that I was in a different classroom every year for the five years I was at it, these things change. They change based on collaboration, they change based on educational philosophy. So, we're building a building for 50 years, I want to make sure we're thinking about our classrooms like that also. And my last point that I'd like to make is, I would love, Mr. Nixon, for you to engage with WinPAC. Now that you have some preferred schematics, that might be another great resource group for you to attend a board meeting with and sort of hear feedback directly from students with special needs.
I'll do it with a wingman.
Yep, that would be great. But I think that Ms. Bolleneys and I attend their board meetings, and I think they would really appreciate somebody reaching out to them about the Lynch project and hearing sort of directly from them as representatives of that community.
That's a good idea.
Because in the past, there have been some disability access issues that maybe we didn't think about or consider, that in retrospect, going back, just like the, just like the air conditioning, we say, wow, if we'd only thought about that before. So engaging them earlier rather than later in the process might be great. That's all I have.
Mr. Brady.
Thank you again for all the information. I just wanted to follow up on, you know, what we've heard from Tom and others around the temperatures in the building in the summer. I think, you know, as was said, no matter what it's called, or no matter what system we use to get there, I think ultimately, the goal, as you said, needs to be that the building is very comfortable for students and staff who might be there on a 100-degree day in July. So it doesn't really matter how we get there, but, you know, I would not want us to be in a situation where we invest in a building where it is uncomfortable on, you know, July 8th, when it's 100 degrees in 2028. So I'm just hopeful that we can make sure we're, as you said, kind of staying on top of that and making sure that that does not get cut at any point, you know, no matter what, because it's, to me, it's foolish to build a building for 50 years and then realize there's multiple weeks that you can't really utilize it when you wish that you could. So, so thank you for your advocacy for that.
Well, and I appreciate that. So I'm actually going to, I'm going to suggest something, and I'm inspired to do it only because of Ms. Bergstrom's closing thought. So with respect to VO, the debacle we had on VO wasn't really because we hadn't thought about it. In fact, I think it was just a vacuum of leadership. There was a lot of pressure. It was suggested you don't need to air-condition the whole building, you can, it'll be fine, you can just do X, Y, Z. Those messages were coming sort of from external to the project team. It was, it was well-intentioned, because there, the interest was in, you know, controlling our energy consumption. But the consequence is really pretty serious, and we had to go back and literally cut holes in the building, as Ms. Bolleneys knows, to try to sort of ameliorate some of that. It is, it could, it could in fact be very helpful. If this committee has consensus to say, we expect, regardless of how we get there and what individual systems we use and what the components are called, the school committee expects the new Lynch to be air-conditioned, I think we have consensus on that, that would be very helpful. And we can certainly welcome, you know, the mechanical engineer in Tappe to share with the EFPBC and even come to the school committee and describe how they propose we get there. And I think that'll be a conversation for the Sustainability Subcommittee as well. But I see a lot of nodding heads, so I think we have consensus on this.
And I think it can be broader. I think it can be.
And I think it can be broader, I think it can be climate controlled air, or, because given your point earlier, I would hate to say air conditioning, and have people associate that with a traditional compressor, if we look at heat pump or.
The expectation, expectation is for air conditioning regardless of how it is provided by individual systems or approaches, it's the end result. And to Ms. Bergstrom's point about the flexibility of the classrooms, I just do want to be clear about something, so, you know, all squares are rectangles, but not all rectangles are squares, so we can teach first grade in a kindergarten classroom, but kindergarteners in a traditional first grade classroom are not going to find the same sort of resources that they're expecting. So a pre-K and a kindergarten room are very similar architecturally, but still a little bit different. The biggest difference between K and the upper grades is they have their kind of integral bathroom facilities that you don't have for, you know, grades one and higher. So I appreciate your point, Ms. Bergstrom, about, you know, the flexibility, and in fact, N5 very closely resembles what we did at VO, where the bolus of classrooms at VO are actually on the middle floor, which is great, because at the end of the day, I mean, again, architecturally, there's no difference between a first, second, or third grade classroom, so we have some flexibility there operationally. But I just wanted to be clear, we don't, we're not, for instance, the space summary doesn't say we're providing first or second grade classrooms with integral bathrooms, which is what you ideally would want if you're going to teach kindergarten there. So I just want to be sure everybody understands that. Okay.
Can you just, just, I think I got that, but you said that the pre-K and the K will have the integral bathrooms, or, or the plan does not say that?
Pre-K will have integral bathrooms, the pre-K piece needs to, pre-K, those kids get their own bathrooms, like with little tiny fixtures, tiny potties and so forth, how many of those are literally directly accessible off the room versus like near the room? That's kind of part of what the whole design is about, but the pre, and Dr. Hackett was just mentioning this, the whole pre-K sort of suite is its own thing.
Right.
So we'll have to wait and see how those sort of bathrooms evolve, but the point is the pre-K students have their own toilet facilities, and so do kindergarteners, but the kindergarteners have it in their classroom.
Right, right.
But that's not true district wide, so we, that's not true district wide, that kindergarteners have bathrooms in their classrooms, so we, we can teach first grade in a kindergarten classroom, or kindergarten in a first grade classroom, even if it's not ideal.
Yeah, yeah.
Someday.
Yeah.
What's, what's especially not ideal is if you have to move two sections of first grade up to the second floor.
And leave two on the first floor.
Exactly, and I think that that's probably the most important takeaway with this exercise, is that having first grade primarily on that second floor, because we know, I mean, you just, right now, I mean, the, the enrollment, I talk, talk about it in the, in the budget report, the enrollment is, is volatile, we don't know what to expect, we can look across the district and see, we go from four sections and five sections to three sections and three sections and four sections, so having the majority of classrooms on one level, in this case, the second floor, is really important for keeping kids together, keeping teachers together, from a curriculum standpoint, from a planning standpoint, and just from a student's standpoint.
And providing that flexibility.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. I would just make, if I could, just to follow up a couple of points, safety will always be the first piece of this, and I, we know, we know that, we will hear it, we will say it, we expect it, but the people and the professionals who are involved in this work also know it, and they also, and they've been through this, so having been, lived through a Occupy renovation addition project, two things, one, the technologies around climate controlled air are unbelievable now, so there's, there really is very little talk about any kind of compressor for air conditioning unless you're talking about very specific spaces, like server rooms potentially, or kind of, those kinds of spaces that have specialized use, and having gone through it and having lived through a summer of the building being open, I can tell you it is, it is very comfortable. So I would expect the same kind of level of technologies, but I think, and I wonder, and I just put this out to the committee, whether it might be, is it worth more than a consensus for the committee to perhaps, or have the chair on behalf of the committee just drop a note to the EFPBC that this was a conversation and that you're just weighing in on this, you just want to make sure everyone understands that the school committee is particularly interested in making sure that happens, just something to think about. The other thing, I wanted to go back to Mr. Hopcroft's point, it's not just about, we talk about swing space, it's not just about how many, it's not just about the building, it's about the whole site. So what can the site accommodate for the number of kids, given the construction activity that we know is going to happen? And your points and questions were, were spot on, in terms of just thinking about, you know, at some point, we'd have too many kids, whether we needed classrooms to move out for the building construction or not, we would have too many kids and too many staff on site to be able to make it, keep it safe. So that will be part of the equation as we talk about swing space, not just, you know, they need to tear this section of a building down, therefore these kids have got to be somewhere else, but it also has to do with that traffic flow, what is safe, and also my experience has been that, you know, with a well-controlled site, there are times in the day that you're just going to tell the contractor, you can't have anything coming in off the site right now, right? So you, the site kind of shuts down, and then I'm sure there'll be conversations about how early in the morning can it start, if that's not already something that's within town regulations on construction and all those pieces, so that will be a, an integral part of the whole conversation around, around safety, will also be that conversation around swing space, so.
And we did that at Winchester High School.
Yeah.
I can't even imagine that particular project.
We didn't have flatbeds trying to show up when it was drop-off at Winchester High School, so there, those kind of major activities were absolutely timed.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, you know, I'll say on the, the heating and cooling, you know, I, I don't care how it gets heated or cooled, as long as it's comfortable.
Turbils.
But, but I will say that a lot of times when, 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 when we ask, and I, and I realize now that there's more nuance here, when we say, oh, is it air-conditioned, that that may mean a traditional, a specific kind of system.
Right.
That when the answer is, well, it'll be conditioned air, or some other variation of that, it kind of sounds like we're skirting the question, which to, to the layperson is just like, is it going to be cool? And so, so anyway, just when we communicate, we should figure out a way to say, absolutely, we're all in alignment, it will be comfortable year-round, et cetera, let us figure out how to do that.
Good point.
On the, the, you know, I, I understand and appreciate the, the grade configuration on the, the second floor, you know, and, and that we're beyond the decision, so it doesn't really matter that much, with regard to debating what we should or shouldn't do, and, and I understand the merits of that, so, so I get where, how we got there. Given that there may be some people who have different views, understanding what, what the different view was, and what I had heard expressed was just the time of getting first graders, you know, to line up and, up and down the stairs, you know, it strikes me that with, you know, different access, you know, you could have even landscape things where you're coming in a little bit higher into the second floor, or, or just, you know, more gentle stepping, or, or other, I don't know, I'm not an architect, so I, I could imagine there are ways that you could solve the actual problem, you know, because the, the problem isn't what floor is it on, the problem is getting the kids up and down the stairs. And so, understanding those to a deeper level would be great, and then I appreciate all the, the thinking about overall site capacity, I mean, it, it looks like with the N5 that you don't have to tear down any of the building while you're building it, perhaps, maybe there's reasons to do it, but, but to your point, you know, we're already busting at the seams on that site, you know, we, we, the parking lot doubles as a playground, and you know, all, all sorts of stuff that, you know, thinking through, you know, what's, what's reasonable to even have on the site while all this is going on, is greatly appreciated.
And with apologies, apologies to the chair, I'd like to say just one last thing on this issue of air conditioning, which clearly is a big topic in a lot of people's minds, and just a little more context, a, a policy was developed many years ago before the VO project, I think it was probably one of the first acts of the Energy Management Committee that they brought forward to the select board, and it spoke to kind of an acceptable temperature range that, that was, it was presumed would be accessible in Winchester schools, and I think the low set point, I think, was 66. If Susan McPhee were behind me, she'd poke me if I got that wrong, but I think it was 66. So some challenges about that is, so as we all understand, it's not just temperature that affects how we feel, it's humidity, it's, it's air movement, air that moves across our bodies feel, you know, that environment feels different than air that's stagnant. So where is that air coming from? Is it a laminar flow? How dry is it? How cool is it? How warm is it? At Morocco, for years, in that overhang, that I think some of you are familiar with, our thermostats typically in the classrooms are much like the one here in the school committee room, you find the thermostat is very close to the entry door to the room. So that's the only thing we have in this room that tells us what the temperature is, but I'm sure on some nights, what I'm feeling over here is different than what Mr. Brady is feeling and vice versa. And so we had cases at Morocco where DPW was setting the thermostat at 66, but at the window, at the window wall, it was actually measured 56 degrees, and it was 59 in the middle of the room, where the kids were sitting for circle for first grade in their winter coats. So not an ideal design, of course, because that's an overhang, it's an old building, but I think it just made a lot of us realize that we can have an aspiration in policy, but if that simply dictates a number on a thermostat, the bigger issue is what's the temperature of the air in the room, what's the humidity, what's the air movement like, how do those kids feel, how do the teachers feel? So it's, it's that whole environment, and that's really something I'm sure the team is going to look at carefully.
Okay. Just add one other thing, I did hear along the way, so by the way, I'm very supportive of that, thank you, very supportive, that there, there may be concerns about energy consumption, and I think I heard on the select board last night, the talk of making the building not just, I forgot if it was, you know.
Net zero.
Net zero.
What?
Net zero.
Net zero.
Net zero ready versus net zero.
Or lead.
Yeah, it was, it was the ready, like solar ready versus actually doing it, you know, I, I think, you know, given that there are concerns, I, I think that trying to do everything that we can to, you know, offset energy, you know, net zero would be great to, you know, I, I think the building should be comfortable year-round, we're spending a lot of money on a building that we want to be usable, we want kids to access education, we have other groups that use the building at different times, so it, it would be a waste of money to not have it be fully, you know, climate controlled inside, and at the same time, that doesn't have to mean that we're going to be burning tons of, of energy, and we could also be looking for other sources, so I just wanted to throw that out there too.
Thank you. And I will just weigh in, that I appreciate, Dr. Hackett, that you and the team, the working group, have been reaching out to the educators, and will be reaching out to the community, just to get their feedback on the design of the building and swing space, and also just getting their input. So I think that's very important, and I think particularly with respect to swing space and what parents might expect, I think you're absolutely right, that parents and guardians will not know what to expect during this, during the construction time, and what it will entail moving kids to different sites, and how that will be. I remember that was a challenge over at VO, just knowing what to expect.
For yourself.
Yes, so, I was a kindergarten parent at the time, so it was all new. And so I think that that is very important to have that kind of open communication and feedback. And then I also appreciate the discussion about understanding swing space, the swing space and safety and traffic flow, I think that is very important with the VO, when VO was over at Parkhurst, I remember that coming up with the planning for the traffic flow at the drop-off and at the pickup was very key, and I think I see that in, like a microcosm of that with the preschool pickup and, or drop-off and pickup in given day right now. And then finally, with respect to conditioned air and air conditioning, however we do it, having lived through that at VO, and remembering conversations when I, when I was an incoming parent, about how the, the VO building, it would be fine because it was going to be built into a hill, and the building would naturally be cool, and then realizing that when the building finally opened, it was not naturally cool in the least. I definitely think that we have to be very clear about what we want and expect from, from an air-conditioned, however it's air-conditioned, however it's climate-controlled building, so that we're ready and we build the best building.
I love Dr. Hackett's suggestion that, you know, the two of you could, you know, I mean, you're sort of the conduit, right? On behalf of leadership, you could, Dr. Hackett could bring, you know, a statement back to the EFPBC, kind of summarizing the discussion, I think that's a really welcome suggestion.
I agree.
Do we want to do a formal vote on that, or just our consensus that we already had?
I think we can just come to consensus on it, since we.
I think it's pretty clear.
I'm, I'm clear.
Yeah.
I mean, the minutes should reflect, Erin. The school committee was, you know, in agreement at the Lynch element, new Lynch should be air-conditioned, however, regardless of what specific equipment or building systems are used in the building, so that the Lynch has comfortable temperatures, humidity, air movement, and so on.
Year-round.
Comfortable, year-round.
Dr. Hackett should be able to stand there in, in July in his suit and not sweat.
And not sweat, and if I can do that, I'll tell you what, we got good climate control.
Absolutely, absolutely agree on the July.
To not lose Mr. Hopcroft's point, not tonight, because it's not germane at the moment, but I think this committee should also have a conversation about similarly indicating our support of a net zero building, the, you know, heading for the highest lead certification that we can achieve, and for solar or electric, whatever goals we have around sustainability and green energy at the school, I think the stronger we signal that as a committee to the design planning process that goes along, just like the air conditioning, signaling that early on, the, the more likely it is we are to reach that.
I appreciate that.
I would just make the suggestion, if I might respectfully, I, I think that certainly Hill and TAPPE are hearing loud and clear that that is the goal, and I think that the idea of, of giving the, them the message, the school committee supports net zero, is important. Whether or not they can get there, I think we all have to wait for the design to come out, Mr. Pruitt from the town is part of the, of the sustainability subcommittee of EFPBC, there is a, I will say this, I've never worked in a community with a building committee with so much talent and expertise in the room, is what we have with EFPBC, I mean, the number of engineers and people involved in this work is incredible, and we're very fortunate to have that, so I, I don't have any worries that that message isn't going to continue to get carried, and that we have the talent in the room, not the hired talent, but the talent in the room who can have that conversation with the hired talent in a way that is above what I would be able to understand in terms of the actual, you know, the actual engineering of it. So I, I think that something along that line would be important, would be good, I just, I worry a little bit that if, about box, because there's a balance, right? You, you can't have everything all the time, and maybe you can, so we'll see what they can come up with, but sometimes there are some incompatibilities. The other thing I would just suggest, or just say, that one of the things I, in a previous life did, was actually brought parents and teachers to an active construction site with the school in progress, and let them have a little bit of a day there to kind of just see and talk to people about what was that experience like? It's the, that may not be possible, but it would be something that I'd be interested in looking into to see whether or not we could do that, because it's just the best way for people to understand, okay, this is what this could, this is what this is going to look like.
Yep.
And it's not unlivable, and it's doable, but everyone does, we do need to manage expectations around what it is, it is different.
And there's a lot of competing interests.
Absolutely, right, so.
So given that we blew up long ago, the 10-minute expectation we had for this whole discussion, but it has been really meaningful and rich, I, I want to say a couple of important things about this too, and I'm glad that Tom and Michelle brought it up. So the project RFP was very thoughtfully crafted to specifically call out and highlight the town's climate action plan. Also made very clear that the school, not this committee, but prior school committees expect that this would be a lead certified building, because we did, and I think we do till, we do still today. But I also want to, I, I agree somewhat with Dr. Hackett, that I think we need to sort of let, let the building committee sort of do its job with the people that we have who are as passionate about this as anybody. A danger in being too prescriptive to say, you know, it must be net zero, one sort of needs to, let's just sort of for a moment acknowledge that, that it, it sort of conceptually, a net zero project is one in which the site generates all of the energy that, that the building needs, so, and I know people like to talk about solar, but what about wind? What about geothermal? So you could, you can say net zero, but there's many ways one can extract energy, right, from the site? And if we were to even broach the subject of wind, that might draw a lot of concern from the neighbors, but you know what, there's different ways to go about it, and that maybe will be something that we, we talk about. You can do anything, if you have enough time and money in construction, you can do anything. I think if we go deep enough, we could come up with a geothermal system that could take us the lion's share of the way there. The geothermal systems can be, can be very expensive, well, they're never cheap, but, but what really would drive the cost of the geothermal system in large part is what are, what are the subsurface conditions, like what do you actually have that's available, right? What's really great is we have a member on the EFPBC with some real expertise in geothermal, and she's eager to kind of sink her teeth into this, she acknowledged as recently as just the meeting last night, and I think the whole EFPBC. And I think the whole EFPC is eager to explore the potential for geothermal, but we need to understand, we need to study it. We need to understand what kind of system might play a part and what does that cost? And then you have to do that cost benefit analysis, right? So if a geothermal system is going to cost $10 million, is that the right decision? Or are there other things that we should be evaluating? And so that's really what, not just the EFPC, but we have created a Sustainability Subcommittee that will be evaluating net zero versus net zero ready. We'll help Tape establish the lead goals for the project that actually are included in that PSR submittal in March as part of our preliminary scorecard, as well as the project's EUI target, so that energy use intensity. And in particular, there's a charge for that subcommittee that includes benchmarking other peer projects. So I think it's very helpful, not just for the Lynch community, but the broader Winchester community to know wherever we land, like for EUI targets for Lynch. I think it would be a cool story to say, well, this is where we're targeted, but this is what this means in the context of so many other elementary schools going on in Massachusetts. So if we want to be at the leading edge, we need to be able to tell that story. I mean, that's just another element of the project I think we can be really proud of. So a lot of really talented people with a real hunger to get into it and kick it off next week. And I think we will be very, I'm confident we will be impressed and pleased at the work that they do.
Thank you. A thoughtful update and discussion. Next, we have action items. And before we move into action items, I'm just going to ask the committee for consensus to take like a five-minute little break, if you please.
Sure.
Thank you.
My vote doesn't count, but.
School Council, PISC, who have joined us at the Policy Subcommittee just to provide their input, which has been incorporated into the plan. This has mainly been around more specific inclusion of students with special needs, such as of a nonverbal type. And also, we've received feedback about having a more of a high-level summary communication of the plan to community stakeholders. School Committee had a first reading of this at our January 25 regular meeting. And since then, the plan has been reworked into its current form. And it has been run by our General Counsel again, and also members of the Administration and the Leadership Team. So we are bringing it back tonight to School Committee for consideration of approval. And we would welcome your questions and/or comments. I will open it up to everybody.
Want two quick comments?
Yes.
I love the chart on page 42 and the appendix that sort of precedes it. And I almost wonder if some version of this could maybe even like show up in like the school handbooks or something. You know, we have a lot of policies, but sometimes parents kind of don't know where they are. I just, I like it. I think it's very, it's helpful. It's clean. It's clear. The only comment I had that just needs an edit is the, and this isn't our fault, it's DSC. So there's link for conflict resolution on the DSC site. And that shows up on page nine and 38, and actually now changed their website. So those links are no longer valid. They have, they provide the new link on their website. They're sort of a bridge for a little bit of time. So we should just update that. It's actually...
Page nine and 38?
Is it the PRS one?
Yeah, it's now forward slash PSM, which stands for Public School Monitoring. Anyway, so it's just going back and double check that the links that we have are still valid.
Yep.
That was all.
Mr. Hopcraft?
I guess, Dr. Hackett, I wondered if you could share your thinking on it. So I was, at the top here, we talk about prohibiting bullying that occurs on school grounds, on buses, at school activities, on, you know, a bunch of things that have a nexus with some school or school activity. And then we have a paragraph that talks about prohibiting bullying that occurs without such nexus, but only if it's done using technology. And I just wondered if it might be better to be focused on if there's behavior happening that is resulting in a hostile environment or other, you know, problems at school. That, I understand cyberbullying is certainly a concern we want to protect against. But if someone was effectively doing off-campus bullying that was having a hostile impact on a student at school, but they're doing it by means not using technology, they're hanging outside someone's house, if they were, you know, writing messages or notes or doing other things, but it's between, you know, two students at our school and it's having a hostile impact at the school. It struck me that maybe that ought to be included in here, that, and even just the parallelism of these two paragraphs, it almost seemed that perhaps that was even the intention in here, and it got, the wording got done funny so that it actually said it was only if you use technology that off-campus bullying that creates a hostile environment at school that it's prohibited only if you use technology to do it. But it's not prohibited if you don't use technology to do it.
So I would just say, and it's a great point, those two bullets are straight from the model plan from DSC. And I completely agree with what you're saying in terms of, you know, if we know that there's bullying going on, whether it's on site or adjacent to, or, you know, somewhere else at a non-school-related event, and it gets reported to us and we find that it has entered the schoolhouse in a way that is detrimental to kids, then we would actively investigate it. I think the distinction, and I think you're right, and I think this language is, I think, showing its age a little bit, is that there was such a rush around cyberbullying. How, it feels like 20 years ago, I don't know how many years ago it was, but there was such a rush to prevent and deal with cyberbullying. And it has just evolved and continued to change so much from, it used to be a group text message to different applications that parents can't access, or that disappear after it's happened, or TikTok, I mean, it just is forever changing. And I think that the second bullet just recognizes the fact that cyberbullying can happen anywhere. And to your point, Mr. Hopcraft, which I think is an outstanding one, any kind of bullying can happen anywhere. So from a practice standpoint, or from an implementation administration standpoint, and we have done several trainings now with our administrators, and we'll continue to do it because it's that important. When we talk about it from a leadership perspective, what we continue to talk about is if kids are impacted, we're going to do something. We're going to investigate it. It may turn up to not be bullying. It may not fit the definition that the law would say is bullying, but, you know, we know that whether it's, well, the definition of it is just that repeated action that's harmful. So where it happens, if we know kids are impacted by it in our school, then we would take action. And, but I do think you raised a really important point because it's not explicit here, and it does sound like we would only take action if it's through technology. And I've thought more about this because you and I had talked about this earlier today. I'm just not quite sure how to expand on it because why, I also want to make sure that we do need to stay within the parameters of the law. So those are my initial thoughts.
Just a follow-up, Mr. Brady, if I could, and then hand it over just because it's directly on that, just a friendly suggestion, and we could add one word and one comma. And just say, at a location, activity, function, or program that is not school-related, add comma, including through the use of technology or electronic device that's not owned, released, or used by WPS, comma, if the acts create a hostile environment at school for the victim or witness, infringe on their rights, et cetera, et cetera. That just, just making the technology be an example of the sorts of ways.
So you've included including?
I've added the word include, a comma, and the word including so that the technology is just one sample of ways that hostile environment could be created away from the school. So the first paragraph is nexus with school, second paragraph is no nexus with school, but there's a hostile environment created at the school as a result of the activity, whether or not it's technology.
I'd like to say that strikes me as a very sensible amendment. And I don't know if that's a motion, but if Dr. Hackett would be supportive of that.
I think it's going in.
I think, I was gonna say, I think we can live-edit the document right now.
I see motion. And I would say that these two bullet points were discussed at great length and scrutinized.
I was gonna say, and I will also say that there are other places in the document that expand on the notion of that as well.
Right.
We may have missed it in this intro, but that was certainly discussed at length by...
I was actively trying to find those when we were speaking, and I couldn't, but yes, I remember that they're in there.
And that they, it does appear other places in the document that we talk, that it's not just adjacent because we had conversations of, well, what if bullying happens in front of Starbucks, but it's our students, and somebody reports that. And we talked about just making sure that as long as it's our kids and it affects the school day, that it is our...
It would be investigated.
It would be investigated.
Mr. Brady?
Just to, Tom, I appreciate your point, and I appreciate the edit. Just to potentially reassure you that I can say as someone who enforces things around bullying on a unfortunately frequent enough basis, that, you know, the law itself, regardless of what we put in our policy, the understanding of the law in practice is that, you know, anything that's going to contribute to a student feeling unsafe in school by another student from their school, it doesn't matter where it happens, if it has an impact on that student's feeling in school, those actions are going to fall under our purview. And that's played out many times, and sometimes it might get a little contentious, but at the end of the day, doing the right thing is doing the right thing, and that's what schools do. And I found that the results, as long as folks follow the process appropriately, are positive ones. And so I think you make a good point, but just to let people know that if you look at the law, it's quite clear that whatever it is that's happening, it doesn't really matter where it happens, if it has an impact on the school and the student in the school, then it's considered the business of the school, and the school administrators will follow up accordingly, as is their mandate and right to do.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Brady, and Ms. Berks, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this, and the fact that, you know, that elsewhere in the document it does cover this. And I do appreciate the edit because for those of us who aren't doing this on a daily basis, you know, just on the communication side of things.
No, it's important to bring it up front.
You know, it makes it crystal clear.
Well, and I was gonna say, and this is why we bring these back to the committee, Mr. Hopcraft, because many eyes make, just make it all that stronger too. So, thank you.
Since Wind Cam can't, I don't think Wind Cam can sort of really display this edit, so I just wanted to be clear that that's, I support the edit. Looks like we're making it, so that's, I appreciate that. The only other comment I wanted to make is given, it's kind of the tweaks that have happened in here on and off, would ask you go back and check the pagination on the table of contents, because some of these no longer track, just a few of them. Can send you the list later if you want.
I will state that the prior plan did not have a table of contents. So the prior plan did not have a table of contents, so I think that's helpful.
And we didn't have that issue before.
I know. See what happens? You try to approve things and it just gets so much worse.
And now it will have, and now it does have links, so...
It does. Links don't work, so I'm...
Yes. But we will get there.
We'll get there.
I would like to just ask either whether Dr. Alenema or Ms. Kirby have any thoughts on the addition of the including, given your years of experience, and just how we describe that in this conversation.
I think it's, like Mr. Brady said, that's regularly what we do in practice, so I think it works. I would agree.
Okay, with that, I would accept a motion.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
One quick question, just because it's come up at other times. At the bottom of page three, it says all staff are entitled to the same, and I'm scared, it says all students and staff, but I'm particularly interested in all staff are entitled to the same protections provided under this plan. That would just go back to another conversation we had about whether things, this is, I believe this is a plan that is focused on students, so I'm just curious about that piece about mentioning staff, and I'm not sure if it's, I just would like some clarity on that.
Yeah, and I thought when that came up, we kind of referred back to the CBA and whether there might be, if there is any statement to be made about protections afforded staff, even if they're articulated in this document, that that statement could maybe better be made in the CBA and not necessarily in this document itself, if that makes sense.
It does, and I think, Mr. Brady, that's a good question, because what I've learned is that adults cannot be bullied, although I think that is disproven every time I enter Dr. Alenema's office. So, just kidding, just getting, but by, under the law, they...
I think you need to come into the creative corner.
It's the creative corners. It's just, it's too much positivity. I feel bullied by it. So I think, I'm guessing, that that last sentence is referring to the first run-on sentence of that paragraph related to civil rights violations.
Got it.
But I think, I agree. I don't know that necessarily staff would be entitled to all the same protections as it relates to bullying.
Yeah.
In here. So can I ask that the committee allow me to make whatever changes suggested by council, even though they've reviewed this twice now?
Definitely.
Maybe three times, to see what they would recommend on that? Maybe it's another clarification, just another sentence around civil rights issues, or maybe it's just...
Or is it as simple as deleting the sentence in its entirety?
Well, to be, to be clear, I want to go back and look at the state document as well because there are parts of this that we did update and parts of it that we did not, that we took directly from the state recommended language, so...
It's old.
Such as this.
So I think to Dr. Hackett's point, having the, our council review it to make sure that that does not need to be included per the law might be important as well.
Okay. And to your point, Mr. Nixon, if we can just delete it, it would be good.
It seems superfluous.
I would just want to know why staff is included, because in and of itself, that would be a true statement.
That's my question. I don't understand.
Right, right. If there's a reason for it, then I can come, then I can come back and explain it, but if not, I'll strike it.
Right. But even if staff are, if the protections are as to be provided under this plan, is this actually the document to say that, or would that not be better served in the CBA?
That's a good, well, or in policy, actually.
Yeah.
Even better. And you do have policy on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Other?
Any other comments?
So I'm happy to make a motion to approve as amended.
Before you do so, Dr. Hackett, do we want to take the appendices separately? Or are we taking it as a whole document?
So the conversation, thank you, that we had in Policy Subcommittee was that the appendices are really the forms that the, they're administrative forms that we use to conduct the investigation. And the question just is, because they're administrative, they would not need to be approved by the School Committee. I think it's informative for you to see it. I think it's informative to the public to see it. But there may be changes in the forms that we make that we, if we had to bring the entire document back to the committee because of a change in the form, I'm just not sure that's a good use of your time. And thank you, Ms. Berks, for reminding me. Just wondering whether or not the committee would be willing to approve the document without the appendices with that understanding.
The appendices are something that we have included but are not standardly included in, or required to be included in the Bullying and Prevention Plan. They're unique to our district. And we have also had council review them to make sure they have everything on them they're required to have. But to Dr. Hackett's point, there are several things in the appendix that are not vital to the description or enforcement of the plan. So it would be, it would be cleaner to have two motions, one to accept the plan, and then one to accept the appendices to the plan, so that we can come back for part or the other and not have to re-review the whole plan each time.
I think it, though, it gets a little sticky, because thanks to Dr. Hackett, who's now brought us a table of contents, table of contents describes all this stuff. So it's transparent. I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, you know, like on page 24, to say end of response plan or something. I mean, there ought to be a place in the document where you can say this is the end of the document, and everything else that falls behind it, you know, those administrative templates as you describe them. But if you're gonna refer, if there are templates in here that are really for administrative use, and they're being reflected somehow in the table of contents...
We just take the pagination off?
We could just take it out of the table of contents.
I was going to say, perhaps take the items out.
I would suggest that wherever you want the doc, the public-facing document to end, you could literally put at the bottom of that page, end of response plan. And so that's it. And wherever that lands in the document, that establishes the end of your table of contents. And then you have these administrative templates and tools that you can use that are kind of back-of-house and not publicly.
I would propose maybe just leaving Appendix A in, because that's the incident reporting form that a person, presuming any, it says a parent, or anyone could fill that out. So I would maybe cut it after page 26 if we were to cut it.
Yep.
So I think it's important that actually all the appendices are available, but not necessarily part of the plan. I think sometimes parents, it's easier for parents if they can one-stop shop, and being able to see the reporting plan, being able to see an example of a support plan, knowing what's in our student handbooks around this.
Plus, we refer to them in the document.
But I don't want to make them to have to link through or search for any of that information. So I think to your point, Mr. Nixon, we could end the document at page 24, and have that be the end of the document that we approve. But then, I guess my question for the committee is, are you comfortable just not approving the appendices?
What is potentially an option, if I might suggest, is to approve the plan in the same motion, approve the plan with acknowledgement of the appendices that include the administrative responses. So you're acknowledging that you've seen it, you've reviewed it, but it's not part of the approval of the actual plan?
Yeah. Sounds good.
So I would be prepared on the fly to make a motion to approve the February 2022 revised Bullying and Prevention Response Plan as amended, pending some minor URL edits, pagination checks.
Review of counsel.
And in addition, separately approving administrative templates for use.
Michelle just added in the review of council for the piece about the staff.
With that, too.
Second.
All in favor? Yes.
So does that mean that we're, we're just approving the plan but not the appendices? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm on board with that.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous.
Personal thanks to the Policy Subcommittee. I don't know what we're gonna do with all our time now.
Yes, thank you. That is not an easy task.
It's good stuff.
I was gonna say, good conversations along the way, though, both with the Administration and...
Community members.
Yeah.
We really appreciate everybody's feedback on this. Okay. And let me just pull up my agenda again. So next item of business is consideration of approval of the recommended 2022-23 school year calendar. And some of the highlights of this calendar are that the start date of the school year is August 31, 2022, which is before Labor Day. Teachers will start back on August 29. And the last day of the school year is June 15, prior to snow days. November Thanksgiving break, winter break, February break, and April, or February vacation and April vacation are as they would be in many, in a typical year. Dr. Hackett, do you have any comment on that?
Only that the discussion around this was, you know, the November break, the week of the 21st, and whether or not we could do something in and around extending that. And Mr. Brady and I had a chance to talk offline, because he had given me some samples of places that calendars were definitely more unique than the calendar here. But a lot of, everyone we looked at did have that week as we have it. What the difference was in some cases within the calendars, they have more professional development days. So sprinkled throughout, you know, we don't have as many professional development days paid, full professional days, I don't mean half-days, is some of the school systems around us. So that gives them more flexibility in terms of when students are in school, when they're not in school. You know, from my perspective, after the conversation and listening respectfully to the suggestions that were made, is part of the concern also around that November week of the 21st, is if we were to back it up one day, then it seems to me that we are gonna lose a lot more students in school that week, because it would be a lot easier for students to, or parents to say, well, you know what, they're really only missing, yes, if the 22nd, for example, became the half-day, then they would only be missing a day and a half. And I think, I don't know that we want to encourage people to take vacation time, because those are school days, and they are as important as every other school day in the calendar. Understanding also that, you know, our staff has to be here. So what we're really doing with staff is we're saying we're giving people an opportunity to maybe not come, because we can, they can extend their time during that week. But we're, the consequence of that is we're gonna end, add another day to the end of the year in June, when we know you want to be here, you know, even more so. So I, that's, I think, just kind of the, you know, weighing out of it. I, but, so this is the calendar that I would recommend.
I do have one footer suggestion, which would be on MU, oh, I'm sorry, you were raising your hand.
Oh, no, go ahead. I'll go after.
I apologize.
Mine's longer.
At the bottom, MU makeup days, I wonder if we can put an asterisk there and then down in the box, I love the detail you have here. It does say if schools cancel any time last day of school moves. Could we maybe just add a sentence there that says, you know, something up to the effect of, per MGL, the last day of school cannot be after June 30? Some districts have run into that in the past.
Yep.
And really nasty winter weather, and decisions had to be made on, you know, shortening spring break or canceling spring break, because you have to make, you have to hit those days. I mean, that hasn't happened to us, but only because in one particular year, when the superintendent had to make the call, do we stay in school, do we not, superintendent said it's a school day. And so when the winter weather really hit us hard.
Yep.
And we had some extended, you know, no school days.
Right.
We were still able to make it work. But some districts had to, you know, cancel spring break.
Yep.
It just might be good to have a little messaging there.
Good suggestion. Yep, yep.
Doesn't mean you have to put MU on all those other dates, but just to kind of make that clear.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who worked on this. I appreciate the thoughts around Thanksgiving, and I definitely, I can understand the reasoning and the rationale, and I certainly think it makes sense. Just, I'd like to bring up a point I brought up before, but maybe hopefully with a little more clarity just around my thinking. In terms of our calendar, I did share with Dr. Hackett some surrounding districts' calendars that do know a number of holidays, both federal holidays, religious holidays, right down the middle of their calendar, where we have a no-school days. And so I, again, would advocate for those for a number of reasons. One of the primary ones, I think, for me is I see this calendar as an educational tool. And people may find that a strange assertion, but I know, like many parents, I print the school calendar and I put it on the refrigerator. And I put it on the refrigerator at my son's height. And he looks at it, and he asks me questions about it from time to time. And I've had students ask me questions about things on our calendar. And so in my opinion, by not putting federal holidays, by not putting Martin Luther King Day, by not putting Juneteenth on our calendar, which is our newest federal holiday, I do sincerely believe we're doing a disservice to our students and our community. In terms of the religious holidays, I would make a similar argument. I know that students have actually, believe it or not, been educated through the calendar because they see things on the calendar, they don't understand, they're curious, especially elementary school students, they're gonna ask a question. What is Yom Kippur? What is this day? What is that day? I don't know. And so I think, again, it's worth doing. And then finally, I would come back to, as I've spoken to before, for school staff, there is a lot going on. I, as a school staff member, will reiterate, I said it today to my principal, my administrative team district-wide, and my district where I work made a mistake last spring, and we scheduled something on a religious holiday that we shouldn't have. And I do not believe that everyone in that group wasn't making their best effort, but I do know that I looked at the calendar, and it was a calendar like this, and it didn't have that religious holiday, and it wasn't on the Google Calendar that we also looked at. And so to me, it's yet another opportunity to back up our administrators so they don't make a mistake that they don't want to make, which has happened, and which happened as recently as this September. So, you know, I appreciate that I may be in the minority here, but I do feel quite strongly about this. So I am gonna make a motion to revise this, to add federal holidays, to add religious holidays, and I would like to make that motion. And if I don't have a second, I get that, but I'm making that motion now.
So before I act on that, I want to ask a question. So I appreciate very much where Mr. Brady's coming from. The network formerly known as the Winchester Multicultural Society had developed a handbook and some helpful resources that at one point, I mean, we may still do that, you're gonna like shoot darts at me, because I know we probably...
I don't know.
At different times in the past, we were, we formally or informally sort of directed families to that information, which was great. And when I first started here as a parent, these were literally just paper calendars, you know, they came home with the kids in their backpacks or whatever, and then now they've migrated to this sort of electronic document. And I've been dwelling on this, because you're right, you've mentioned this before, and I've wondered, you know, how do people really interact with this calendar? So for me and my family, we don't print it and put it on our fridge, but I do look for it electronically a lot. And we could certainly put links on here to something that describes all that. So as a practical, I'm with you in spirit, 100%, but I'm also kind of wondering, like, how does it all, how does, two things, how does it all fit, you know, in a document so it's still legible and literally accessible visually to people? And then... And then the slippery slope, too, is, you know, how do you, so you're going to list these, but why not these? That has been an issue in the community before. But I still think that has been tackled somewhat through the multicultural society, as they used to be called when they first were starting this. So I feel like it's been addressed in partnership with them before. So I was just curious if you, how do you think your, if I were to second your motion, but how might it manifest? Can you just, or maybe you don't know, like, how would that literally manifest itself in a calendar like this? Like, how would that look like? Do we have room to do it? Or would just a link to some resource be a helpful compromise?
That is an excellent question. Frank, I don't know if you would mind showing one of the ones that I shared with you. And just for the clarity of the committee, the two that I shared were Cambridge and Lexington. And those just happened to be the first two I looked at because they're ones that I've looked at previously, not before I was on school committee for various reasons. I found their calendars to be helpful. And so those were the first two I pulled up. And lo and behold, they both had, and they don't have the exact same things on them. So I think to your point, I would want to know from the community, and I think we could pretty easily do a Google Form survey where we're asking, you know, what types of days do you want to see on the calendar? I think the federal holidays are clear. I mean, they're federal holidays, they're set by the federal government. We honor them. We have them as no school days. And not everyone does that, just if people were curious. When I worked in Virginia, we had school on Veterans Day and I was quite upset because veterans were working on Veterans Day at my school and I found that rather absurd. But that does happen in places in our country. So again, it kind of comes back to the values and labeling things, I think, as well. So...
So to not highlight the Lexington public school system because I just don't think that's appropriate. I just went to the Cambridge public school system, which I...
So, and before you do that, I appreciate that we're pulling this up. But I would like to say that I also did some investigation between last meeting and this meeting. And I find that you will find as many calendars out there as there are school districts.
Sure.
And many people are approaching this in vastly different ways as we continue to navigate the challenges of, to Mr. Brady's point, educating the community about what's out there, recognizing the fact that we're still a public school. So the issue of religious holidays can be sometimes a tricky, a tricky place for public schools to go in their acknowledgement of those. And I think that it is going to be hard to look at any sample and capture what we want for Winchester. I think that's a bigger conversation for this committee and maybe goes beyond approving this calendar tonight. I think that this is a great conversation to have, but I'd like to have it with more information than just one calendar that's up here. I have seen districts that, through their professional development page, have a document just like you're talking about for teachers to go access that comes up monthly in, adjacent to a school calendar that is just clean for parents so they know when they're coming and when they're going. So I appreciate Dr. Hackett pulling this up and Mr. Brady sharing it with us, but I, I'm just not sure that approving our calendar, that we need to get out to our families and this discussion need to be happening exactly tonight. I would suggest that if this is something we want to talk more about, that we add this to our future agenda item and come back with a little bit broader information and some examples of how we might address this.
Well, so just to be clear, I don't think Mr. Brady is suggesting he's against, like, the calendar in terms of the dates that are on here, start of school, PD, you know, end of school.
Yeah.
He's just, he's making a suggestion to add some information. And this is an important conversation for us to have from time to time. I've lost track of how many times Heidi DeLeo has come to this room to let us know where we've fallen down, even after we've made changes to our religious observances policy. And it breaks me up when that happens. So I know that this is an important issue that just requires some ongoing conversation and some care and feeding. And I appreciate there are things we can do on the staff side. But I thought what was interesting about Mr. Brady's observation is there are teaching moments for students as well. And so you're quite right. It may be that if tonight we're simply approving what's here in front of us, that there, because this is after all a calendar for next year.
Right.
I don't think that the Titans team at McCall is planning the, you know, September schedule quite yet, so...
They're getting close.
And all the other teachers. So, you know, we got teachers and teams that work really hard, right, with one another, but they're really focused on this school year right now. So my point is, if there is some added layer of information that might go on this calendar, either helpful for teacher planning and communication and scheduling or just sort of for our student community, there may be time to develop that, you know, in time for when we would need it, i.e. the school year. But I still wanted to just get a better sense from his motion when we say add it. Like, so what does that literally mean? So I, this is helpful if you just take a moment and share with us, if you would.
And I would just comment that, I'm sorry, Mr. Hopcroft, for interrupting. I would just comment that prior, that at the end of the summer last year, back in July, I believe it was, when Dr. Hackett had first, had first joined us, you had, Dr. Hackett had brought up a link to, I believe it was a New Jersey website that listed, had a fairly detailed list of the holidays and festivals that was provided to our staff and I, prior to school. So maybe that is just something, if we were interested in providing a link to that, that our families could also...
Sure. Sure. A short answer would be yes. And we have created a shared Google Calendar that, you know, we encourage people to click and have on their own calendar so that they can see it. But, you know, we also know not everyone uses their Google Calendar, too. So, you know, I think to Ms. Bergstrom's suggestion, I do think that this is a much larger conversation. And if, you know, if it makes sense and to the committee, maybe what you do, and I think this is what you both, several people kind of said, is approve the calendar is in terms of the dates that we have on the calendar now. So everyone can see what it is. And we can revisit the actual document, maybe to refer to Policy Subcommittee or wherever you might want to have a little bit more work done. Because I do think if we're going to go down this road, because I have been down this road, I think it's important to redo some outreach also to some of the, you know, some of the groups represented here to ask about, you know, how do they feel about it? What's the, you know, I hate to say it this way, but sometimes it's a question of what's the most important day to the majority of people who observe?
Sure.
And do we consider taking those days off versus just recognizing them on the calendar? And then, you know, I will say that in a prior life, it was three things that we were doing. We were doing COVID, remote learning, we were doing changing a mascot, similar here, and we were doing this conversation.
You added one more layer on.
We just thought, why not just do it all?
Rip the Band-Aid off.
It is, it is, it is a, it is a big conversation. I think that what I would like to also suggest, that before we go into it, maybe we can bring the idea of the discussion back to the committee. Just have a conversation, kind of what are the parameters around how you want this to be looked at? Because I think being really clear on the front end about what the task is would be really helpful.
So I appreciate that. I just want to make an observation. I'm going to look at what's below the blue line up there from Cambridge, which, and I love that you put up Cambridge because I think of them, they're the United Nations of Massachusetts Public School Districts.
Are you looking at the last day of school?
So...
To your earlier point?
Yep. So there's a lot here that's pretty innocuous. First and last days of school, what are they? Early release days, what are they? No school, offices closed, what are they? School vacation. And then I think what we're talking about is over there in the lower right-hand corner. And...
Some of what's in the middle as well.
I would say in the middle, too.
Well, and my vision's not great.
Well, see, they're actually...
Oh, no, no. Let me be clear, but what's there in the middle, that's just the list of what's closed.
Right.
So I'm taking Mr. Brady's motion, and you should clarify if I misunderstand it. It's not so much about a suggestion that we're going to create more no school days for certain religious observances. So I did not take his motion that way. It's more about an opportunity to recognize and note when these dates are.
Yes.
So I must confess, I am ignorant when Ramadan begins and ends. I just don't know that. And I don't think it's a third rail for us to say, you know, when that is, if that's something that, you know, our community in particular would appreciate.
You know what? If you get it wrong as administrator, I can tell you that.
I was just going to say, I actually think it is. So...
I respect that, but I'm just going to say philosophically, I appreciate where Mr. Brady's coming from. And I'm okay, I'm okay approving the calendar as it exists tonight because when I see, it's helpful for me, because I'm a visual person, to understand that if there is a place where this calendar goes, that literally, you know, it takes the format you have and then, you know, maybe things shrink a little bit and if we can put some of this information in another place. And then it's simply an area on here where we can list some other cultural or religious days that are important to the community. I mean, I clearly, you know, I understand you disagree with me. But we have done this in partnership in the past, at least in an informal way, with the Winchester Cultural Network or Society.
Network for social justice. Network for social justice.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm referring to them that way because I feel like it was clear, I feel like their work in this regard was clearer and better understood under that name. I'm not saying they're not doing it today, but I feel like they have a broader reach sort of today. So in fact, I have a book at home that they published under their previous name that I hung on to.
But that's a different...
That's a different conversation.
That's a, that's a different thing than we're talking about here. If we're talking about recognizing particular religious holidays, we're talking about valuing certain holidays over others.
And I was also going to say, I think the key word that you had just used is some. Recognize, is some. And I think, and as Ms. Bergstrom is saying, saying some holidays, recognizing some implies that, or just means that others are not going to be recognized. And where do we draw a line on some versus all?
But I think to Dr. Hackett's point, you know, and that's also part of why I use this as an example, this is quite comprehensive. So though I would imagine there certainly could be others that the Winchester community would come up with, I would say I would be surprised if there were others that were come up with from the community that are not reflected on here.
Then you would be surprised to learn that not everyone in this community would recognize October 11th as Indigenous Peoples' Day. While I may personally, not everyone in this community may. You may be surprised to learn that Greek Easter is not on this calendar, yet is a well-held holiday within this community. So this is why I would encourage us to make this a future agenda item as part of a larger discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I, I don't, I do not want to give the implication to our community that we as a committee value somebody's religious holiday over somebody else's.
No, absolutely not.
So I think that it's an important discussion, but I think that for tonight, we need to approve the calendar as presented. And as I mentioned, make this as a future agenda item. And I'm sorry, I spoke over you, Mr. Hopcroft.
That's okay. I was actually going to ask a while, a while back, whether...
Back in '21.
Whether I should second Mr. Brady's motion so we could have a discussion. But I think that's a moot point at this point.
Point of order.
So, you know, I agree with, you know, I agree with Mr. Brady's thought process here, you know, honoring the sort of the civic education, the religious, the cultural, you know, I think would be a good thing. I also hear Ms. Bergstrom and Dr. Hackett and others, you know, there's, there's a...
There's an Orthodox Easter.
There's, there's an issue of approving a schedule of dates, which I think we should do tonight. And, and I think, you know, I think we should think about what the right forum and process and whatnot and even what the right organization is to determine what the holidays are. And then I think we should think through what the best mechanism for communicating those to our community is. Maybe it's on here, maybe it's on, you know, another page or other document or something. But I, I think it's a good thing to, you know, to show that we honor and respect and to have also just the resource so that people don't inadvertently schedule over holidays of the people care about in town. So anyway, I guess maybe I'll bring it full circle to say, you know, that I would support. I don't know if you've made a motion or if we should make a motion to approve this and also later have a conversation for Mr. Brady.
That is exactly how I would make the motion.
Yep.
To approve the calendar as presented this evening and to return to the discussion of how to acknowledge significant holidays within the community.
I'll second that. Oh, oh, sorry.
I'm going to propose an amendment to what you just said. List. I, I recognize, it means different things to different people. So all I see is a list.
Yep.
I don't, I don't believe, looking at this, that Cambridge Public Schools is putting any special value on Ramadan over something that maybe isn't on that list. All I see is, oh, Ramadan starts on April 2nd.
Except that it's acknowledged.
I didn't know that.
Right.
So recognize, acknowledge, these, these words can have kind of different meanings to people. I think what Mr. Brady is after is, can we just sort of include a list so people have the information? It's not about sort of casting, there's nothing here that says to me that there's value judgment about one more important than the other. It's in chronological order.
But if my holiday's not on there?
Yes.
Then it's not listed. For example, is...
You're not going to find one.
If that, if that happened, and this is why, and I know this is painful, we've been talking about this all. But this is an issue that many in our community care a lot about.
Yep.
So I respect Mr. Brady for making the motion. I think this is a meaningful and helpful conversation to have.
Oh, I absolutely do.
And we should have it from time to time. But, you know, we're not perfect.
Right.
The school committee's not perfect, the administration's not perfect, you know. So, you know, maybe Lexington's perfect, but anyway.
Oh, wait, that's not what I had in mind.
So... My point is, you know, if we make mistakes, we'll hear about it from the community and it's a learn, it's a learning opportunity. And, you know, maybe we go back, we react, we change something. I mean, that's, that's all we can do.
We like appendixes. Maybe it's an appendix to our calendar.
Forward-facing appendix.
I would second the amended motion to refer to it as a list.
List.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
Ready for a vote?
All, could we just go back and just say?
The motion? Re-stated.
Clarify the motion and the amendment.
I would move that we accept the district calendar as presented for the 2022-23 school year and that we, as a committee, will return to look at providing a list of significant holidays to the community to amend that calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well done, crew.
Thank you, all, for taking that up.
It's a good discussion.
I appreciate it.
This is good discussion.
It was good. I wondered in my head whether that should be two motions and whether, it did prescribe it to be part of this calendar, but we'll have the conversation when it comes back.
Yep.
Yeah.
We know the intention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So next item of business is consideration of approval of the Winchester High School Tech Crew Spring Musical Equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is the Chair Report, and I have nothing further to add at this time, followed by Superintendent Report.
Well, I don't like to end on, like to end on an even number. I just wanted... Sorry. I just wanted to return to just a couple of points. So we will be more explicit in the registration process for the remote participation on the form. I already thought about some things that we can say. One of which, for example, is that people have to have the latest version of Zoom downloaded and that becomes a problem if they don't. Just for the record, we do know who logs in. So if you register and you then log in for the meeting, we have that report. So, and we can see who has logged in. That doesn't mean that the person on the other end knows that they're necessarily connected or logged in. I mean, that, that kind of stuff can happen and we understand that. I also just want to reemphasize, and this was a great conversation earlier, there aren't many school systems that, one, that are meeting in person as well. I don't know if there are any other boards in town that actually meet in person other than the school committee. Maybe there are.
Maybe one.
Maybe one.
The old committee has met in person at their most recent meeting.
And I, and I think the idea that we're still kind of providing this hybrid is a good one for all the reasons that you've outlined, even though I didn't like it and didn't agree with you in the beginning of it. But I have now kind of understand that it is important. it is important. But it's also something we're doing as an extra, right? The, the main public participation venue is here. If people aren't comfortable, we've provided that alternative. We don't have to provide that alternative. And there may be times when that alternative doesn't work for technical reasons. But you're not in violation of anything if the technology doesn't work, when in fact you've posted the meeting, duly posted it, and you have the opportunity to be in public comment in person. So I, I will go through the form, the registration form, because I do think making some of those points, make sure you have the latest version of Zoom. Please understand you have to have your camera on. I think good reminders, and maybe even a little bit about the, the policy in and around three minutes, not to exceed 10 as well. So I, I, it was unfortunate that we had a technical issue. I think, you know, obviously, you know, we do have people in person at times. So I just wanted to make that clarification, but also to say that the technical issue, you know, oftentimes is that disconnect between the version of Zoom that people have. Because if you're not using it all the time, you're not getting reminded updated. So.
And we saw this, by the way, at a recent EFPPC meeting, didn't we? We had over a hundred, we had over 100 participants, but I'm told there were, you know, maybe a half dozen on Facebook saying, the link doesn't work.
Right.
The link doesn't, well, clearly it works. There's over 100 people here.
Can I also just, two, two other reminders to put on there. One is even if the Zoom link doesn't work, and this doesn't help for public comment, but for people trying to observe for the 32 other people, that WinCam is broadcasting this. And, and that people should feel free, as many people do, to, to send us their, their written testimony. You know, that, that, you know, your public comments, you know, whatever you wrote, your notes, et cetera, you can send them to, I, I would do both personally if I were planning on making a point here. We read all of those and.
And it becomes a part of the public record.
And it becomes part of the public record. So, you know, so, so just as people are thinking about how can they express, you know, their views and their concerns, you know, we do read them, we do take them all seriously. And, and there are multiple options for both observing and participating in, in the public process.
And our meetings are not to be viewed through the Zoom. It's, our meetings are, we, we have them in person, or you can see them by live streaming on WinCam, or you can watch them via WinCam cable television. Either, I cannot remember, I think it's Comcast, channel 22, or Verizon 38, channel 38. Might be backwards, but.
And just to remind people, there are no tech issues if you come in person.
It's true. It is true.
No, there's.
I can still.
We will always see you here for public comment. If you're able to come in person, please do so.
Recognizing that's hard for some people, though.
Recognizing that's hard for some people. Right. That's why we offer the other option.
You can still email, carrier, carrier pigeon, you know, whatever your testimony to us.
I do look forward to the day when we can sunset this hybrid approach, however.
I would agree with you.
I, I, I got to be honest with you. I've not, from the day we decided to start meeting in person, I've not been a huge fan of the remote participation. We're a public body, we're in a public building, we have ample parking, so long as you're masked and you're maintaining social distance. I love the setup that the chair and vice chair have set up, you know, in the hallway. You've got the sign-in sheet. We usually have chairs out there. I feel we are really going above and beyond to make that opportunity available and do it in a safe way. So every time, you know, you're very clear, Madam Chair, you go through the process, describe what the process is to sign up for public comment. More often than not, there is none. And those are seconds running off the clock that, you know, we inevitably go along on other, you know, important stuff. So certainly people could come here physically. They could, they could send statements to the committee. They could send something to the committee through the superintendent. You could certainly acknowledge as chair, as some committees do, under communications. We've received XYZ this week. For anyone who maybe is unable or uncomfortable coming in person, but would like a statement to at least be acknowledged at a school committee meeting, we've done that in the past years ago. Doesn't mean somebody's going to read it as a proxy out loud, but we can acknowledge that we received it. So I think there's some things we can do to still afford that extra measure of participation. I would just be very happy to see this gone soon. I think it's very clunky.
I just, I just have to weigh in because I, I disagree. And I, I think that the world is moving in a direction where accessibility is being provided through technology. You know, there's this thing called the Great Resignation that's happening, and it's driven largely by employers who say you must come in. And for a lot of people, you know, nowadays, that's, sometimes it's not comfortable, or, or for other reasons, it's difficult. And I, I agree, it's above and beyond. It's not what's required for us. And I do think the public should know that, that we're going above and beyond, and that they do have many options. They can come in here, they can email us, they can call up Dr. Hackett or write a letter. You know, but, but to the extent that, that the technology cooperates, and I do suspect that, that it's different people's versions of Zoom that may not be the most current version. I think the district has a pretty current version, you know, to at least try to make it available, you know, I think is a good thing.
And I'd just encourage the community to recognize that and be flexible with us when it doesn't work out as tonight, too, that, understanding that it still is new technology for us to be using it this way, for this purpose. So I just, just encourage you to be flexible on, on your part. If you're a community member and you're struggling to log in, know that we are doing our best to make as many options possible for people to provide public comment to us. So.
Assume good intent.
Assume.
Assume good intent.
I'd agree with Tom's point, and I, I really appreciate your point, Tom. I think we want to always be offering as much access as possible. And, you know, it, it is extra. And I, I certainly appreciate Frank having to do the extra because you can see, I'm not the one trying to run the Zoom. I, I, having done that, I, I don't envy him having to do it during the meeting, but I do appreciate him making the extra effort as well, because I do think it makes a difference. And, you know, we, we all appreciate public comment, whether we agree with it or not. It's still, it's an important part of the process. So I, I think, you know, to your point, however we can offer it up, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
The, the other thing is that technology has failed for all of us on, on probably more than one occasion. And, and it is super frustrating.
Right. It is.
Oh, yeah.
The, the trade-off that the public has with this convenience that we're providing, again, above and beyond what we are required to provide, the trade-off is that it's not as reliable. You know, to Ms. Bergstrom's point, if you're sitting here in the hallway, there's a good likelihood you'll be able to walk into the room and, and provide your testimony. If you're on Zoom and, you know, and it's not the newest version or, or other things, you know, you may have, it's sort of, you assume the, the risk of your, your technology not connecting properly. But, but I do think trying to be as, as open as we can is good. And again, send us an email.
So just appreciating the sentiment behind that, and I'm, I agree with Mr. Hopcroft about, you know, on the sentiment side, that there are some districts, I think some of us are familiar with them, that have found themselves spending precious resources before the Attorney General's office over complaints about public comment, access to public comment, and so forth. So because we are doing something extra, which is awesome, I just worry that there's a public expectation that because you said you were going to do this, by the way, I love the fact you have to register within that window, the 48 hours, for obvious administrative reasons. So that was a brilliant move and necessary. But because we offer this, even though it's above and beyond, we're offering this and it's public comment that's on the agenda. I hope that we don't find ourselves in a situation someday where someone is so frustrated that they choose to sort of act on that, you know, from a legal point of view, because they, they weren't able to provide their public comment. And that bothers, that bothers me. But I get it. I mean, the technology is imperfect.
Yeah.
But there, I'm just saying, other districts have, have struggled with this. So.
I think that's a fantastic point. And, and I might suggest, Dr. Hackett, if we could ask counsel for the language we need to put on the website to make it clear that, that, I, I know some of this is a communications thing, but some of it is probably a legal thing if we're setting an expectation, you know, that, that we could, could make it clear that, that we're making our best effort to make this work. And that, you know, you're, if you want to have 100% likely, and by the way, no one has 100% likelihood. If you show up here and there's 100 people here, it's a 20-minute public comment period with three minutes each. So, you know, your, your, your way to get, be sure you're heard is be first in line here in person. But we understand that for some people, that means they wouldn't be able to make a public comment. And so we're trying to accommodate it, and we're making our best efforts. And, you know, and technology, you know, it's, it doesn't always work. Don't go to the AG over that, you know.
So.
Or write to us.
I, and I will just, just, not to extend this any longer, but I'll add two words that will make some people in this room go, oh, that would be another policy subcommittee issue that I would recommend that if we want to memorialize anything around that, Mr. Hopcroft, the legal issue would be amending our policy around public comment to reflect this as a more permanent change than just a COVID-related change. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is I'll also remind the committee that public comment is actually not required by the committee. We do have meetings that do not have public comment from time to time, and it is not required under Mass General law for us to have public comment at any meeting. So that's a consideration as well.
But just to be clear, I'm saying that when we're offering it.
Right.
My point is about the public expectation.
Right. Well, and that's what I'm saying, is that in terms of public expectation, offering public comment is our opportunity as a committee to agree to hear from the public. So this is, is an add-on. So.
And I just want to be clear also that we have had legal counsel give us advice on this, and that has been. And part of what Madam Chair reads at the beginning of the meeting is, is part of the language and around the fact that our primary source of public comment is in person.
And that follows our policy.
Right. So I think we're covered, but I think, to your point, I think Mr. Hopcroft, being more clear, maybe even part of the form, of being more clear in, in our website or even on the agenda, just to say, you know, specifically, primary is in person, maybe to, something as a kind of a disclaimer so we can manage expectations.
And I think it's not, it, it may be worth even saying that, you know, you know, that while there's no requirement that we offer public comment, the committee chooses to, you know, embrace, you know, input from the, from the community, and we, we, you know, try to make, you know, our best efforts. We, we create time in most of our meetings for public comment in person. And, and we're doing our best with the technology. By the way, before we change any policies on that, we should probably see how long the Attorney General is going to allow that.
I was wondering that, because I believe that is just through April.
That's why we have hesitated so far.
At this point.
Yeah. So maybe wait and see if that gets extended, because if not, it seems like a waste of, of subcommittee time.
Seems like it's popular with the current Attorney General.
Yeah. Yeah. She's said that before.
I think Dr. Hackett said he'd like to end meetings on an even hour.
Yeah, now that you messed it up. So three more minutes, I guess.
So I guess we're here until 10, Dr. Hackett.
I was, you know what? I was on target, and then you took my public, my comments and just turned it into a discussion.
See?
Anything further on the, from?
No, I'm good. I immediately regretted what I said.
Okay. Next up, we have future agenda items, which are as listed here.
Oops, they're not.
I will say the building, building, well, building facility update, which seems to be a regular fixture on our meetings. Food service contract update, the interim superintendent formative assessment.
Calendar.
Schedule of courses.
Program of studies, yes.
Act on that, right? Vote on the call in high school.
That will be coming up, I believe.
And calendar. Madam Chair.
Calendar. Yes. Mr. Brady?
One additional future agenda item, I'd like to suggest that at an upcoming meeting, maybe in the next month or two, that we have some kind of discussion or report out on our SIBILS data and just looking at how overall the district's doing. I, you know, have appreciated what I've seen in the district where I work. We've, we've looked at district-wide data, and I, I think it would be very informative and useful for the committee to get an update in terms of how that looks at, at the mid-year, which is traditionally when some of those assessments are repeated and contrasted to the fall.
And I would just throw out the warrant closes for Springtown Meeting on Friday, March 11th.
Yep.
So just, it's always a good placeholder to have Springtown Meeting warrant, if there's anything we want to talk about. Given the Select Board's vote last night, eventually there'll be an article that, you know, we might want to cosponsor on the transfer of the well field. It'll take a while for that to obviously be created, but something to think about.
And, yes, that is true. So I was just going to say that there is a little bit of timing juggling with the Select Board and their meetings, because I believe their meeting, their last meeting before the warrant closes is March 7th. And our next meeting is March 8th at this point. But. Okay.
Next meetings?
Next meetings, we have March 8th, 6:00 p.m., March 22nd, 6:00 p.m., and April 12th, 6:00 p.m.
But we haven't added one, right?
As well as an executive session this Thursday.
That is right. We do have, we have an executive session that will be coming up this Thursday, the 10th, at 3:30 p.m.
And just so the committee knows, two policy subcommittees.
Policy Subcommittee will be meeting, as we'd said at the beginning, just to remind you, on February 11th, this Friday, and then also on February 15th.
We're exhausting. Can I just tell you that?
That's why I said, I hate to mention that this might be a policy issue.
It's just a lot of things happening.
And then Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee on February 28th. Thank you.
Yeah.
February when?
28th.
Okay. And with that, I would accept.
I got one more.
Yes.
I would love to hear, I would love to hear from the superintendent when you're ready to share with us where you think we're going with ARPA.
I'll do.
That, because that was discussed.
As soon as we hear it from the Select Board.
They discussed it last night.
They did. They started a discussion. They didn't.
And I heard that they are setting aside some significant dollars for some significant items. So it would be helpful to understand if, if there's unanimity among the board about certain things that are set aside, how much is still in play. Just, it'd be good for whatever update you have about where that's going, it would be helpful to understand.
Definitely. And, and the timeline as well, because.
Yeah.
And the process that hopefully we know they're using.
Okay. Going to be a busy, busy set of meetings.
Where have you been? Like 20 minutes ago.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you to WinCam for all of your help, as always.
9/11, it's an odd number.